Recording in progress.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Let me, it's not official until you hit the gavel. Welcome, everybody, to the Federal Way City Council meeting for September 7th, 2024. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. It's great to see a full house here. We've got quite the presentations for you. To start off with, let's go ahead. First section of the meeting is under Ceremonies and Recognitions, and we have the swearing-in ceremony of new officers. And with that, I will invite Chief Wong to come on.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. It is my pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department to you and to our residents. Mayor Farrell will administer the oath of office this evening. The six officers standing before you are entry-level and experienced lateral police officers. All but one are currently in our field training program. These officers are quality individuals and people of integrity. We're fortunate to have them on our team and serving our community. First, we have Officer Helena Stratton. Before jo— Thank you very much. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Helena was a police officer coming from one of our larger South King County agencies. She has seven years of experience and served as a field training officer for her previous agency, with her last assignment being as a canine handler. Helena started with our agency on August 1st, completed her field training program, is already working in solo capacity. Helena earned a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice and Associate in Psychology from Pierce College. When she's not at work, she spends time with her husband and family and travels the world. As I mentioned, Helena is a canine handler, and we are—she'll be patrolling our streets with her partner Dexter here soon. She brought her dog along with us. She's in her solo capacity. She'll do in-house training with us with our canine program. And she'll be certified and be patrolling our streets here soon with our canine. So thank you, Helena, for joining our agency. Great. Next, we have Officer Stephen Oak. Prior to joining the Federal Way Police Department, Steve worked as a staff biologist for the Point Defined Zoo and Aquarium. Stephen also has a Bachelor of Science in General Biology from the University of Washington. He graduated from the Police Academy on June 27th, finishing number two in the practical exercise portion. Steve is scheduled to finish his field training program on October 30th. Stephen enjoys spending time with his family and working in the garden. Stephen was part of the emergency response team at the zoo. So he had prior training on emergency response and with firearms. So that's probably the reason why he did so well at the academy. But it's a very competitive environment, and of all the recruits, out of 30 recruits, he finished number two in all the practical exercises that they do up there at the academy. So we're really fortunate to have Steve with us. Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Mickey, Officer Mickey Elliott. Before joining our city, Mickey worked as a service reliability engineer for America's Credit Union, a marketing coordinator for Movement Mortgage, and a web developer. Mickey graduated from the Police Academy on June 27th and is scheduled to complete his field training program on October 30th. He loves spending time with his family and teaches jiu-jitsu at a gym. Now with Mickey, he's very computer savvy, and he can video production as well. And for his academy class, he did the video production. And I've been to a lot of graduations, and Mickey developed the best video I've ever seen at the Police Academy. So not only is he going to be a police officer for us, but he's going to be—he's going to come handy for us, for the city, creating some video productions maybe for the police department. So thank you, Mickey. Next, we have Officer Timothy Shelton. Before joining our team, Timothy served as a high-mobility artillery rocket systems crew member in the United States Army. He graduated from the Police Academy on July 25th and is scheduled to complete his field training program on November 30th. He enjoys spending time with his girlfriend and hiking. And we want to thank Tim for his service in the United States Army and continue to serve our community and our nation as a police officer. So thank you for your service, Tim. Next, we have Officer Christopher Boyle. Before joining the Federal Way Police Department, Christopher was a site manager for Image Homes and served as a 19D Calvary Scout in the United States Army. He graduated from the Police Academy on July 25th and is scheduled to complete the field training program in December. When not at work, Christopher enjoys golf, woodworking, spending time with his family and friends. Christopher and his wife are expecting their first child in October. Christopher, we also want to thank you for your service to our country. All right. Next, we have Officer Frank Spatafor. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Frank worked as an army, armed security guard for Veterans Security Operations and as a Brigade Air Defense and Aviation Element Officer in charge for the United States Army. He retired from the United States Army in 2022. Frank graduated from the Police Academy on July 25th and is scheduled to complete his field training program in December. Enjoy spending time with his family and riding motorcycles. Again, thank you, Frank, for your service in the military. Officers, if I can have you come up to the podium, the mayor will give you the oath of office.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States. And the state of Washington. And that I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And laws of the state of Washington. And will to the best of my judgment. Skill and ability. Truly and faithfully. Diligently and impartially. Perform the duties of police officer. In and for the City of Federal Way. In King County, Washington. As such duties are prescribed by law. All right. Congratulations. Should we—
Are you good or are you—
Should we do a group picture?
Sure.
Yeah. Let's do this. Counsel, what about—let's have the council stand up. Let's have you guys come there about three on either side. I'll get up there. We'll do a group picture.
Federal Way Police Family, if you'd like a photo, please feel free to stand. Get to the middle and take a photo if you'd like. City administration, can you send me that photo?
All right. Congratulations, officers.
Federal Way Police Family, this is your opportunity to exit if you'd like.
Congratulations to Oliver with the red shoes. She's going to kindergarten this week. Good job, Oliver.
Congratulations, officers, and your families, and welcome.
Yeah, go downstairs. Maybe she can get your goodie bag.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, and now for the next presentation, we have a very special recognition for the Pacific Christian Academy Girls Track Team, their state performance. Just did a phenomenal job. We've got the coaches and some of the athletes that are here. I think actually that probably the best way that would work is I'm going to announce the coaches and have the coaches come to the—come to the podium, all bring the individual certificates of recognition. And as the coaches, you know, talk about the individual athlete, they can give them the recognition. We'll take pictures for each one, and then again, we'll do a group picture. We'll try to get like more straight on this time. And we'll have the athletes and the coaches down below, council up here, and I will stop micromanaging the pictures. So with that—okay, with that, why don't I introduce the coaches? We have Darian Green as the head coach. Natasha Green is the assistant coach. Teresa Fulmer, assistant coach. And Terrence Tucker, the athletic director. All right, Coach, as soon as our athletic director gets in position, the floor is yours, head coach, head coach Green. In fact, actually, why don't I come down with all these certificates and—
I'll help supervise this. Thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. So before I hand out the certificates, I just wanted to read a short summary. I just wanted to share that I'm delighted to share this report about the performance of the Pacific Christian Academy Girls Track Team. We call them PCA. At the 2024 High Schools Class B State Championships, the girls delivered outstanding performances in the following events: 100 meters, 200 meters, 4x100 meter relay, and the 4x200 relay. They ran personal bests and broke the school record in seven of the eight races they competed in across the preliminary and final rounds, including bringing home the state championship in the 200 meters. Sweeping the top two spots, first place, we'll get to that in a second. First place and second place, we'll acknowledge those, those girls. The girls' team also finished fifth overall in team scoring, which is the highest finish in PCA school history among any athletic event we've done at the state level. So they were tremendous. Also, our team, our team's theme for this track season was called Unbreakable. And they embody that theme by overcoming challenges and persevering to qualify for state. The girls are all God-fearing, resilient, and hard-working student athletes. I am proud of the way they represented their faith, their families, their school, and the City of Federal Way at the state championships. So let's give them a round of applause. So now I'm going to, I'm going to give a summary of the performances and hand out their certificates. So the first athlete, student athlete I like to call up is Ruthie Dodge. Ruthie finished first in the 200 meters, becoming the first state champion in PCA school history in any running event and set the school, PCA school record at 200 meters. She also finished fourth in the 100 meters at state. So Ruthie Dodge, come on up. The next student I'd like to acknowledge is Emily Dodge. And Emily finished second in the 200 meters and third in the 100 meter, setting a new PCA school record at 100 meters. Congratulations, Emily Dodge. So the next student I'd like to acknowledge is Janelle Induba. Janelle finished seventh in the 100 meters, and she became the third fastest girl in PCA school history at 100 meters. Janelle Induba. So there are two athletes left, and these two athletes, student athletes, participated in the team events, not in individual events. One of them isn't here. But the one person I want to acknowledge who's not here, her name is Josie Amberson. Josie competed in the 4x200 relay at the state championships. She's not here, but I do want to acknowledge her. So can you all give Josie Amberson a round of applause? The last athlete I want to recognize and have come up would be Eliana Nanton. Eliana was part of our 4x100 meter relay team. And our girls' 4x100 relay team finished third at the state championships, setting a new school record. The team included Eliana, who ran first leg, as well as Janelle Induba, who was second leg, Ruthie Dodge, who ran third leg, and Emily Dodge, who was the anchor. So come on up, Eliana Nanton. So I do want to acknowledge the help that I had here. So the first person I want to recognize is my wife, Natasha Green, is my assistant coach. Thank you, Natasha. The second person I want to acknowledge is the other assistant coach who is not present, Teresa Fulmer. So give Teresa a round of applause. And the last person I want to acknowledge is just a wonderful gentleman and a dear friend who has been a great supporter of mine since I've been coach, is our fabulous athletic director, Terrence Tucker. So I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council for recognizing our school. We have a wonderful school and faculty that supports us. I do want to acknowledge our head of school, Mrs. Debbie Schindler, who is here. She's been a tremendous support for our students and our athletic program. I just want to say a special thank you to her and also to Eileen Wilson, who helped connect with the city council to make this day possible. So thank you all, and God bless. Now, we're going to take a group picture with the mayor.
Before we end, can I say something, Mayor?
Of course.
Yeah. For those of you who don't know, my kids went to Christian Faith, Pacific Christian, and even before then, I think it was Pacific Christian Academy. And finished, you know, went K through 12 there. That wasn't my athlete. He was the musician. And then the other two competed in state championships at Christian Faith School and won. So I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to see the legacy that you guys continue to do well here. And congratulations, and thank you for being here. Christian Faith School and Pacific Christian is my home, so.
Thank you.
I love you.
So Mayor, where do you want us? In the front?
Right here. There we go. Okay. Yeah. All right. Congratulations. You're welcome. You're welcome. Great job, everybody. Oh, great. Thank you very much. Oh, Brian. Next section. Are you doing the— Oh, yeah, he's just tired. Thanks for asking. Okay. Well, that's been great. We had a couple of great presentations. Now we are on to Mayor's emerging issues and report. We've got just a couple of slides to do. Talk about the things that are going on. There we go. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Okay, Pete Von Reikbauer, our King County Council member, has—oh, and everybody, feel free to— we've got all these chairs in the, in the front now, so feel free to fill them in and step right up. So Pete Von Reikbauer has what he refers to as his Good Eggs Breakfast. And it's really an opportunity to bring leaders, both in public service and in business and in the community, together. And many of those meetings occurred down at Emerald Downs, and they've been a great host there. Last week, we had the Beth Nochs of the Seattle Sports Commission talk about all of the exciting things that are happening in the north, you know, in the Seattle area, the Pacific Northwest Puget Sound, especially, you know, one of the things we were talking, one of the things that she was talking about is the World Cup that's coming in June of 2026. And so all kinds of really exciting developments that are going on. There's our King County Councilman Pete Von Reikbauer. To the left, to his right is Mayor Nancy Backus of Auburn, then Mayor Tracy Buckston of Des Moines, and myself, Beth Nochs. The mayor of Pacific, then the mayor of Milton, and then— What's that? Algonah. Thank you very much. Algonah, that's what I meant. And then the mayor of—gosh, yeah, he's the new guy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, Edgewood, the mayor of Edgewood. And he's actually the brother of Gordy, the retired firefighter from South King. Gordy Olson. That's his, that's his brother. Anyway, that's the mayor of Edgewood as well. Okay, so it was a great, great opportunity. Pete really brings all kinds of great people together, talks about the things that are going on. And once again, it's always fun to get down to Auburn and see Emerald Downs again. All right, next. All right. This was something that was really unexpected. Pete Von Reikbauer, we'll have a slide a little bit later, had a recycling event on Saturday over at the Performing Arts and Events Center. And one of the teachers at Yosoi Unico Childcare, this is behind the Performing Arts and Events Center and, you know, right in that plaza right back there. And we were, Pete and I were invited to say hello and thank the teachers that are being trained for the local daycare there. I'd been to that location a couple of times. They have a yearly little, they've got the little kids. It's a daycare. So on, I think it's Earth Day, they have a, in the spring, they have a little parade that takes them down to Town Square Park. And they have all the flags and everything. And anyway, this is a training that was happening this past Saturday. And they were, actually, one of the things they were also talking about was, and celebrating was Mexican Independence Day, which was Sunday. And it was great. It was a great event. And they were, you know, they were talking about, you know, training the little ones, you know, training the teachers on how to train the little ones, and it was just a really nice community event. Okay, next. I finally got cornered and had to thank you, Brian, for—Brian was taking a couple of pictures of me. I only hit, this was a, the Kiwanis Golf Tournament Friday, September 6th. And it was a great opportunity to get together with the Kiwanis, and it was a good group. And we had, you could see that the federal team there, EJ and Kent Van Alstine, our assistant city attorney, and then Brian, and then myself. Kent was the ringer. I'm not sure what you'd qualify me as, right after we identified that, we were trying to figure out what happens if you actually— this is at North Shore Golf Course. What happens if you actually hit a window or a house? Wouldn't you know it, the, I actually hit my first house. But it was only one, and we didn't hear a window break, so we didn't have to take off. I'm kidding. So there was no breaking of windows, but we had a great time, and it was for a worthy cause, all the worthy causes that Kiwanis is involved in. And yeah, it was fun. Okay, they finally had some left-handed golf clubs for me. There was no getting out of it this time. Okay, this was a really nice event that Bill Vadino and I went to for Marine View Presbyterian Church Men's Breakfast on Saturday, September 7th. They really, they invited me there to talk about all the issue, many, most, many of the individuals in that group I've known for years, live in Federal Way. It was an opportunity to talk about the exciting things that are happening. It was a Saturday group, as I said, and it's just to talk about everything that's happening. And I did my best not to make a comment about the Ohio State sweatshirt, but I may have delved into some college football loyalties. Anyway, it was a great opportunity there, and a good conversation was had. Okay, we had the recent community events, the 23rd anniversary. Can you believe it's been 23 years since 9/11? I want to let you guys know, just as a community member, when Chief Wong got up and gave his address, address to the, to the group there at the station, he really represented us so well and really had profound words in commemoration. You could see there, we, they moved it inside. It's the first time I can remember it actually being inside, but there was, there was the threat of rain, and so they moved it inside. And Chief Ben Volkenberg was there, and some other individuals were, you know, spoke. And actually, our own, our own city council member, Jack Walsh, sang the National Anthem and just did an amazing job. You have quite a gift, Councilmember Walsh. Thank you. Oh, yeah, and many of the council members were there. In fact, we sat next, right next to each other. That's right. It was great. And actually, I can't remember the name of the individual, the other individual that spoke. Could you say that louder, council member?
A.J. Frank.
And could you tell what was significant about Mr. Frank?
Yeah, with, with A.J., he actually is a former Federal Way resident. He was my back fence neighbor—
That's right.
—30 some years ago, and was at one time on the volunteer with the Federal Way Fire Department. After that, joined the Seattle, City of Seattle Fire Department. And he had a, he's a, has a, he's a canine— rescue dog. And on ground zero, he and his dog helped on what they referred to as the pile to recover some of the bodies that were lost at ground zero. And it was, was very touching that he was there. He's been in a number of other rescue operations in Haiti, up at the Oso Slide, and other, other things. And it was great to see him and hear his, his story and the services he's provided to our community and our country.
Yeah, I—Councilmember?
His mother was a principal in Federal Way School District for quite a number of years, very well-respected principal.
My, my only complaint about him is that he moved away and wasn't my neighbor anymore.
He gave, remember that all the aircraft in the United States were, were down, were, were— all air traffic across the United States was shut down except military aircraft. And he was in, he told the story about the not-so-lucrious, but the important ride that he took in a military aircraft from this area all the way over to New York. Actually, we landed in New Jersey, and he went right there. In fact, actually, he was in some sort of training with, with rescue dogs from around the country. And so, you know, they were so lucky to have him and, and in that effort. So it was, it was great. It was just really, I think, a very special memorial. If you haven't had a chance, you know, this is the memorial that is at the fires, in front of the fire station on 320th east of the freeway, and they've got, they've got it— And they've got it one of the beams, one of the I-beams, from one of the Twin Towers that went down. And then also a rock from Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And it's really a very moving monument and memorial for those who lost their lives in 9/11. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this was the event I was telling you about with Pete. Pete does... Tried about once a year. Our illustrious King County Councilmember, he put together a recycling... Excuse me, paper recycling and event. And it was a good event. A lot of folks there, taking advantage. And there was actually a little window. A lot of people are obviously very concerned about making sure that their documents get in the right place and get destroyed. There was actually a window you could look through and watch your documents be shredded as it's occurring. Okay, and then, on Sunday, the Integrity Life Church celebrated their 16th anniversary on Sunday. And it was... They asked me to say a few words, and they do so much in the community. And that's the church out there off of 161, right before you get to Edgewood, you know, right there on the north side there. And they've been there... Well, they've been a church for 16 years. So, Pastor Joe Bowman and his fellow pastors have been doing a great job and really serving the community. Next, upcoming events. We have the Hachinowa students, and we have a sister city in Japan named Hachinowa. And they come... The students come to visit us on September 26th. And that'll be here at Council Chambers. I'll get some tours and meet community members. All right, next, we've got the Taste of Federway on September 28th at 11:30 a.m. to 2 p.m. That's at the Federway Farmers Market. That is right... That's at the mall behind Dick's Sporting Goods and that building that used to be Macy's. And the Farmers Market just does a phenomenal job, and it's really one of the hearts of our community. And it used to be the chili cook-off, where the police and fire would face off, and then other community members would do that. And I would always eat far too much chili. But now, it's vendors from around the city of Federway, not necessarily chili. So, anyway, that is Saturday, September 28th, 11:30 a.m. to 2. So, come on down. And I got to tell you, that line... Try to get there a little bit early, because as soon as they open, that line is very long. So, try to get there a little bit earlier. Okay, we are offering free financial literacy classes to the public. That's some... The Financial Resiliency classes resume on September 26th and go to November 21st. If you have any information... Any questions about that, or if you're interested, just contact our office, either the City Council or the Mayor's Office, and we'll make sure we get you hooked in there. We have them at the Community Center, and that's just a really our community center. And if you haven't been over to the Community Center since the pools have been fixed and all that, it's just absolutely beautiful over there. The pools look absolutely beautiful. We're working on the lockers. And actually, when we had an event there last week, John and his team over there gave me just a quick tour and update on what's happening with the repairs on the lockers. Okay, and then, we have a meeting greet with council members and school board members on October 5th, 10 a.m. to noon, at the Starbucks at 301 South 20th Street in front of Safeway. And that's a... Obviously, the council will probably talk about that. All right, that's what I have, and thank you very much. And it's been a busy time. Okay, now, the most important part of the meeting is public comment. And you've got three minutes unless you have... You're speaking about five people that are present and that are listed. Green means go. Yellow means you've got about 30 seconds. Red means please stop. Boy, as you know, I really hate to interrupt people. So, when red goes off, please, you know, within a few words or so, please wrap it up for everyone else. Also, we do... Council has asked that we... We don't want your address. We've got, you know, people, if they put your address here, just tell us the community you live in. That's something the council is interested in. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll introduce some folks, and if you could sort of queue up in line, and we'll go from there. Now, let's see here. Where'd my glasses go? Here we go. Okay, first is Willie Smith. After Willie, we've got Mr. Ken Blevins, Todd Jarvis, Sue Wolf, Meredith Daniels, Jim Sexton, Mahir Barmel, Troy Edwards... Is that Mitchell? I'll work at that later. Joan Joris... Juan, excuse me. And then John Grossman. Juan Ramos. Okay. Okay, all right. Willie Smith. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Mayor Farrell, Mrs. Honda, Mrs. Kuchma... I can't see all the names, but members of the board, thank you for having me. I'll try to make this brief. I really just want to bring up... I saw these police officers here, some of them are members of the military, have retired. I did so as well, and it's not about me. It's really not about me. I'm talking... I want to just briefly talk about the freedom that we have. To that point, I remember, I think it was Judge Lawson, brought Lieutenant Colonel Joe Madison Jackson here years ago and brought him to Federway High School in Todd Beamer for a briefing. Very nice guy, got to know him very well. And then he told me something some of us probably didn't know. Meaning, at his age, and for those who were alive during the Cuban Missile Crisis, he flew one of the missions. Oh, really? Yes. Some people didn't know that. He flew one of the missions. Why am I saying that? Because it had a great impact on those students. Oh, by the way, let me back up a little bit. When I retired, I became a junior RTC instructor here at Federway High School. So, it had a big impact upon a lot of the students. For him to tell that, I'm one of those guys to help keep us free. I'm one of those guys. So, I think Chief Huang, he has one of the graduates of the program, Sean Rigney, and we appreciate it. I appreciate it. I like what I see here in Federway. So, what am I leaning up to? When I go out and I see the flags on my morning run, I feel good. Thanks to you, they're there. And I know it's not cheap to upkeep those flags. I live in Glen Park, and some of the trees have overgrown the flags. I've talked to them. Why am I saying this, gentlemen and ladies? It means a lot to veterans. It means a lot. I've talked to people in First Special Forces Group. A lot of them were in the tunnels during Vietnam. A lot of us did a lot of classified work we could never talk about for us to be free. The flags mean a lot. I know it's not cheap to restore them. I know that, and it's probably bigger priorities the cities have, but it means a lot to a lot of veterans, if you can find a way. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Ken Blevins.
Ken Blevins from Federway. Mayor, council, thanks for listening to my comments. Going to be a broken record, because I know that you guys are going over the budget. And again, the day center is something that really is a eyesore for the city, sadly, because it's supposed to be a place where, you know, there's supposed to be services and so on. And really, it's just a place for people to go do drugs out in public, right near children. And obviously, you know, when you complain about it, they'll fix it up temporarily, and it'll come back over and over again. But really, that's just the way it's going to be. So, it's an attraction for homeless people to get services. But when it comes down to it, the homeless now are addicted to drugs. And until we actually focus on the addiction being the issue, not make an excuse like, oh, these people are mentally ill and so on, so on. Well, let's get them off the drugs and see where we can figure out their mental illness, because they are mentally ill. So, it's a multifaceted thing that we have to deal with. But until we deal with the facts, not all poor homeless people and so on, let's take care of the issue of why they're homeless. Let's do something for these people. It's sad. We... I drive by there all the time, and they're dropping people off like they're just, you know, a piece of toast. And they're not. They're human beings. They're just shuffling them around the area. And I don't want Federway to be a part of that. I want Federway to stand up and say, you know what? Actually, we're not going to have a day center here. And the reason why is because we're not going to be a city where you're just going to dump human waste here and not do anything about it. We should stand up, and we should force them to address the issue of why these people are out there. It's not a good look for our city. We have other citizens here that have lived here for a long time, a lot of children. They shouldn't have to see the drug addiction that's going right on the street, right in front of them. It's not something that's pretty. They don't deal with this stuff in Bellevue. Federway shouldn't be the dump of King County. We shouldn't allow King County to do that to us. We shouldn't allow the state of Washington to do that. We shouldn't allow our state representatives to make laws that bring homeless people or without the actual services that really help them. And we have hotels that are sitting here that aren't being filled. That's King County's issue. It's not a Federway, City of Federway issue. I know we're trying to help and do the best that we can for these people, but we need to hold these people accountable at the state level and the county level to make sure that they actually do what's right for us as Federway citizens first, number one, and then also for the people that we're supposed to be looking out for that can't look out for themselves. So, let's just keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Ken. Todd Jarvis.
Hi, I'm Todd Jarvis. I'm the president of DBM Contractors located down there on 356th. DBM is one of the top 10 landholders in the sub-area. I've read your sub-area plan. Considering we are one of the largest landholders down there, I'm surprised that it didn't make us a stakeholder. Instead, the plan was really developed in direct conflict with any of our company's interests. You know, I don't think this plan is ready. I find that the data is flawed. I don't think there's any real lack... I don't think there's any real understanding of the companies and the employment density associated with them. And I don't think there's any real economic data in here that talks about, you know, what's the loss? What's the loss in tax, in wages? What's the effect on the city's budget? I think you need that in order to vote on a plan like this. I'll start with the data. I mean, Table 2 says, you know, there are 63 construction sector employees in the sub-area. DBM alone had 111 in 2019, when this data was established. So, we're talking about a factor of 75% just on DBM's data, and there's at least two other contractors in the area. I mean, that's a wide margin of error that we're talking about here. Your plan says, "Construction makes up a small portion of the total employment, but occupies a disproportionate larger land area." Somebody's just looking at the pictures. They don't really understand the employment density here. I mean, it's kind of like looking at the big boxes and saying, well, you know, there's too much parking lot there. There can't be much employment. DBM paid over $14 million in wages last year. That's the company you want to displace in this plan? That's not what you're looking for. Table 1 details out that there's 330 acres in this sub-area. 2,174 jobs. That equates to 6.5 jobs per acre. DBM's already 50% higher than that. Your plan is to increase by 42%? You don't kick out companies that are already 50% higher in employment density, you know, with the idea that you're going to end up 20 years from now with another 40%. The math doesn't make any sense. And, you know, the plan, it has us being replaced with multifamily housing. That's no jobs. You know, these are high-value jobs. Since 1990, DBM's completed over $1 billion in construction projects out of this office down here. We've paid over $4.8 million in B&amp;O taxes. We pay over $200,000 a year in property taxes. $3.4 million since we've been here, since the city became a city. Sales taxes, utilities, what are those, six, eight taxes, those now? I mean, they all add up. But without knowing this data, I don't think you're ready to pass this plan yet. I think you need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sue Wolf.
Hello. I'm also employed with DBM Contractors. And a lot of the next few speakers behind me will be talking to you about the facts and the company and the numbers and how the information that you guys seem to be going off of is not accurate. But I want to speak from the heart. I live in Federway. This is my home. I have lived here since 1968, when my parents bought their first home on the Twin Lakes Golf Course in the First Division. I met my husband in 1975, working at the Federway Twin Cinemas, where he worked as well. I'm the second graduating class at Decatur High School. Jack Doby here was the first. I... This is just... The DB... The Federway area is where I lived. This is the only place I ever wanted to work. I took the job 40 years ago at DBM Contractors, because they were in Federway. I don't plan on moving. I don't plan on retiring. Right now, I live in Belmore Park. It's getting pushed out. Part of the... My neighbors are being pushed out by the Sound Transit. And it was my understanding that it was Sound Transit that was going to be pushing DBM out. But now, we understand that it's City of Federway. And that really upsets me, because I'm a life of Federway person. So, that's...
Thank you. Meredith Daniels.
Thanks for letting me speak. Todd kind of talked about some of the data there, but, you know, one of the things that I don't think a lot of people realize, because construction's like this black box, you see it on TV, but there's people like me, females, who've been in this business for a long, long time. And one of the reasons that DBM's so valuable to me as an employee is I don't have to work for some of these big national contractors that we're competing with, that their employees fly in and fly out for these projects. But we actually compete with them as the only local contractor based here in Federway. We do the work for Sound Transit, for WashDOT, for King County, for Federway, for all sorts of businesses. And all of that stays here. That's here. The people that we employ are all local, and it's family-owned. I mean, there's no one in our company that doesn't know Michael, who's going to speak. And when something happens, he takes care of us. But this plan winds up with... The impacts inevitably are going to be DBM moving. But there's no way to move this company and have it survive, which means the end of it, which means pretty much all you're going to have left is big national contractors with no interest in the community and all that money getting sucked out of our economy and going elsewhere. Sure, the stuff will get built, but it's not going to be by us, by the local community. So, that's why I feel very strongly about this. This plan doesn't really look into all of these things. It talked about a few stakeholders, but it didn't talk about the existing businesses and the employees that are here that we're not going to be able to work here anymore. So, I hope you'll consider looking into this thing more and tabling it rather than just pushing it through super quick. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Jim Sexton.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'd like to speak about the value and the opportunity of the jobs at DBM Contractors. We're a union contractor. I happen to be a salaried employee, but we are a collective bargaining entity. We have employees that are union people, highly compensated. Last week, on our payroll, we had 90 hourly employees. 27 of them were laborers. Two of those 27... Pardon me. Three of those 27 are apprentices, people that are learning the trade. Their wages, just to give you an idea of the value of these jobs, hourly journey-level wage for a laborer is $48.61 an hour. Their fringe benefits are $1,524 an hour. That's a total compensation package of almost $64 an hour. Operating engineers, 55. Two of those were apprentices. Hourly journey-level wage, $60.14 an hour. Fringe benefits, $26.57 an hour. Total compensation, $86 an hour. Pile bucks are welders, certified welders, tradespeople that are skilled. Eight last week. Two of them are apprentices. Eight last week, two of them are apprentices, $63.49 an hour journey-level wage, 17.47 fringes, total compensation, $80.96 an hour. These are excellent jobs that we want to keep in this community. In addition to that, we have 22 salaried employees who work in the office, engineers, estimators, project managers, administration, accounting, and these are all local people. So when you think about the relative value of one company in this sub-area that is potential, that has the potential to be displaced, and you think about replacing that with jobs that are going to be in what, potentially the service sector, where you don't have this kind of earning potential, advancement potential, people that, you know, these are, these, these packages are pension-oriented, they have health insurance attached, these are excellent jobs. I would hate to see those leave this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mahir Barmal.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to speak in reference to the same South Station Subarea Plan. I worked for DBM for about seven years now, and I believe the proposal would also adversely impact our operations, if not shut us down. Like Meredith said, construction can be kind of a black box, so I'd like to speak to the council and educate them a little bit on exactly what we do and how that positively impacts City of Federway. We're a union geotechnical contractor. We work on public and private projects of various sizes. We work in a variety of sectors, ranging from transportation, healthcare, education, and housing, to name a few. In fact, some or all of you have probably used or visited our projects that we worked on across the state, including locally, the Good Sam Hospital, Climate Pleasure Arena for a hockey game, various elementary schools around Western Washington, a number of Washington State DOT projects across the state, and ironically, Sound Transit projects as well. In the course of our work, I'd like to believe we also have a kind of a construction jobs multiplier effect on the local community through the use of local vendors, such as Dickman Heinz Lumber, based in Federway, Edison Construction Supply, Northwest Steel and Pipe, Tacoma Hydraulics, they're all based in and around this area. Not only that, we work very closely with the Boys and Girls Club of South Peget Sound. And I've got this number written down here, but I don't believe how big this is, but we've raised in the course of time about $1.9 million for the Boys and Girls Club. Personally, as a minority in STEM, DBM sponsored me for a specialty H1B work visa that gave me the opportunity to live and work in America, and I appreciate that. If this plan were to go through, I'm not sure that I would be able to commute further or if the company survived to the new location, which would likely cost me my job and at a point where me and my wife are trying to start a family, which is obviously not ideal. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Troy Edwards.
Good evening. My name is Troy Edwards. I reside in Maple Valley, but I work in Federway. I was hired by DBM Contractors in 1999 and have worked there ever since. That has been a great benefit to myself, my wife, my daughter, excellent family-owned construction company in the middle of your sub-area plan that has a potential to get relocated. It hasn't just been a great benefit for myself, for my family. We've put money back into Federway, meals, gas, shopping at the mall, shopping at Home Depot, Costco, Lowe's, even the Eagle Hardware before Lowe's, right? It's been a longstanding return on investment for the company and myself within Federway. And I would respectfully request that you take a look at the research and the numbers behind the sub-area plan, take it off the vote tonight, and reconsider it once the facts are further down the road.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael B.
Try Murphy.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Sorry, Murph.
Peace.
Exactly.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, I want to chastise every one of those people that spoke for me, because they called themselves employees. They're not. They're family. They're colleagues. Every one of them is important to the operation of DBM Contractors and this community. I may own the company, but I am no more important than every one of those people, my colleagues. We're colleagues. We. I want to impress upon the council that fact. The fact that this plan, such as it is, has not really been vetted bothers me greatly. I feel betrayed, in a sense, because the Sound Transit preferred route up until something like eight months ago, or whatever it was, did not involve my property. Behind the scenes, there is this City of Federway plan to revitalize or whatever it is, this community, and then all of a sudden, the preferred option runs Sound Transit through my property. You're going to have a heck of a time convincing me that the City of Federway did not get together with Sound Transit and said, "This is the way we can get rid of DBM. This is the way we can get rid of these people. This is the way we can get rid of these $75 to $90 a job, or an hour, jobs, union jobs. Union jobs. Family living wage jobs." I haven't been to, this is my first City of Federway meeting, but I know every one of you has at some point in the past, probably six weeks, talked about living wage jobs. Will you please look these people in the eye and tell them why you would vote to get rid of them? Thank you.
Juan Vares Ramos.
Hello, Mr. Farrell, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, members of the council. Jim, I want to wish you a belated birthday. I hope you had a great one. Today, I want to talk to you today about, in Military Road South, it has seen huge improvements since 2021. Crime there was insanely high. It's still high, in my opinion, but it's better than it was before. But recently, the council accepted a new shopping cart proposal, and it passed, I believe, and every time I'm driving now in Military Road South, yesterday, actually, I saw four shopping carts across the Safeway, By Harvest, and the Walgreens. So I wish to ask for the, the council to please have more police presence in there and get those shopping carts taken care of. I like my city. I love my street. I want it to see clean. And then another thing I want to talk to you today is that last council meeting, a person who volunteers their time for a commission came to the council and complained about someone should stand down rather than standing up. Instead of going straight to the commission like they should, they went behind their own people and went to the council instead and talked to them instead, talked to you guys instead. She said that people of Federway should all come together for this one event that we hosted, but yet she comes here to the council and attacked one person, accused, attacking their First Amendment right. That should not be okay, especially from a commissioner. I was once a commissioner. I was once the chairman of the youth commission, and I would never allow that in my commission if that, if somebody would have done that themselves. So the person who was told to stand down, I sure as hell hope that they stood the heck up and keep using their voice, because using the word "stand down" is utterly disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. John Grossman. And then Barbara Keen.
Well, good evening. It's good to see you all. I told Linda, I said, "It's fun to see you all in natural habitat." Many of you know me as John Grossman. I am the Development Director and Community Engagement Director for Valley Cities Behavioral Health here in King County, and I'm accompanied this evening by Cassandra Riley, who is our Federway Valley Cities Clinic Manager. She'll say a few words. We've really just come tonight to say thank you. You have, you meaning the city council, the city itself, has just done an amazing amount of support for us at Valley Cities. You may or may not know, we have 10 outpatient clinics in King County. We have two inpatient clinics in King County. We have over 600 employees now. We saw an increase in our staff of 196% over the last 18 months. 100 of those 600 employees exist right here in Federway, between our admin building, right across the street where I work, and then a couple miles away where Cassandra works. So I've asked Cassandra to come up and share the difference that you've made in our school-based programs here in Federway, a little bit about her clinic, but let me just say, I hope to see many of you on October 3rd, and I thank the city for supporting our breakfast fundraiser that we're having. Tremendous, and really appreciate you. Cassandra?
Yes, thank you for having us and letting us talk here today. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity that you have given us and the funds through the ARPA contract allowed us to provide services for a lot of students who may not be able to get mental health services. But at my clinic, we are able to help those that are at the day center who come to my clinic and get resources and get SUD services. We do the best we can with the resources and the funding that we do, but we, again, are really thankful for what you have afforded us and given us, but we're here in Federway, right down the road.
And the last thing I will just leave you with is, just to make a big point of this, you know, as school budgets were cut and it was possible that clinicians could no longer serve our students, we have an image of who receives mental health and substance use disorder treatments. A lot of them are our students, children, teenagers, and it's because the City of Federway stepped up and filled that gap that we were able to put our clinicians back into those schools, including the high school, to make a difference. So once again, thank you all for what you do, and thanks for supporting Valley Cities. We really appreciate you.
Thank you both. All right. Barbara Keen. And Barbara, before you, before you get talking, before we get start the clock on, when we get done with public comment, I'm going to have, I'm going to ask Keith Niven, our Community Development Director and our City Administrator, to address some of the concerns that were expressed in public comment. So you may want to be thinking about if you're going to, you know, hit that, hit some of those points that were expressed in public comment. We'll do that before we get too far into the meeting. All right, Ms. Keen.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Barbara Keen. I've come to speak to you tonight about an issue that directly affects my life and my husband's life. I live in the lodge at Peaslee Canyon on Military Road near 320th. The back of our complex is on Peaslee Canyon Road. Directly across the street from the complex is an area with a lot of brush and trees and a hidden abandoned house. In this area, there is a large encampment that has been there for a very long time. This encampment is right next to a Chevron gas station on the corner. There are two other gas stations on that corner as well. Given that the season is changing, it will soon become very cold. When that happens, the people living in the encampment will most likely be starting fires to stay warm. Unfortunately, since they are addicts, they will probably fall asleep while they are doing drugs. Fires can and do spread out of control in encampments when this happens. In an area full of brush, trees, excuse me, three gas stations in an apartment complex, this is a catastrophe waiting to happen. The encampment area is considered a part of unincorporated King County. I and others have tried to get King County to clean out this encampment, to no avail. They simply close out our requests without any action. Also, trucks and vans periodically arrive and drop off more people at the location. In addition to the possibility of fire, we have an issue with crime in the complex. We have had cars stolen, garages invaded, apartments broken into, and even a murder at that complex. About a month ago, someone decided to drill a hole in a car's gasoline tank and let the gas spill all over the driveway area. The firefighters had to come out in the middle of the night to deal with this. The reek of gasoline remained for days, not very good for the environment or us. You may say, "That's King County. We can't do anything about it." And it is King County. However, you are representing an entire city in King County. You have clout. I strongly urge you to protest as a group to the county and get this place cleaned up. We, the citizens of Federway who are living in this complex, matter, and if the encampment catches fire, the media will not refer to it as being a problem created by King County. They will blame the City of Federway for this. That's you. Do you want to take the responsibility for this kind of disaster? I don't think so. Please, do something about it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Chief, let's, let's talk about this, you know, we're probably going to be here for a few hours tonight, but first thing tomorrow morning, and about, I know that we've had frequent contact, I know specifically you have, with the sheriff's office and about their enforcement out there, but let's, let's talk about how we can go about that and how we leverage the, the help of our King County council member as well. All right. Thank you, Ms. Keen. Okay, that's, well, thank you very much for everybody. Do we have anybody online or anything? Okay. That concludes public comment now, as promised. Our director, Community Development Director, Keith Niven, who I know has been working on this, but also in concert with our City Administrator. Keith, can you talk a little bit about some of the concerns that are raised with, with DBM and what, you know, what this comprehensive plan means with regard to that business and how, just address some of these concerns if you can.
Sure, I'll do my best. There were a number of things raised by the seven folks who provided public comment tonight from DBM. You know, and I'll start with Mr. Murphy's comment. So he's correct. As we sit here today, Sound Transit is planning to release their environmental impact statement, maybe by the end of the year, I think, is their timeline, and it's going to show station locations, where Corliss Batch Plant is and where DBM is, as potential locations for that south light rail station that'll be in the City of Federway. Either one of those takes out DBM, and that's a decision that's being made by Sound Transit and not by the city. What the city is trying to do here with the sub-area plan is really get out in front of any changes that might happen because that sound, that light rail Sound Transit station is going to go in 10 years from now. It's supposed to go in in 2035, and if they stay on schedule, which they never have, it's 10 years, maybe it's longer than 10 years. But what this allows us to do is to plan for a street network, to plan for parks, to plan for creating a neighborhood in an area that will be very much different than it is today. And that means that there will likely be housing that'll be there that's not there today, and there'll likely be some businesses that will be there that aren't there today, and there will likely be some land uses that are there today that won't be there 10 years from now. What this sub-area plan does is it gives the city some direction to start talking with property owners about rezoning property. It gives us some direction to start planning for parks and infrastructure projects. It requires nobody to sell their property. We are not taking property. We are not forcefully rezoning property. DBM, if Sound Transit doesn't take DBM out, if that is an outcome, this sub-area plan won't take DBM out either. They can continue to keep their business there for as long as the owners want to. And so really, this sets some direction for the city so we can make some informed decisions about both land use and infrastructure moving forward. We've been playing catch-up quite a bit up in the downtown area, things like view preservation, things like changing our zoning standards. We're doing all of that basically on the eve of that Sound Transit station opening in 2026. The thought here is in 2026. The thought here is to get out a little bit in front of it, because all of those things take a lot of money and a lot of time to actually generate. And setting the direction now is what we're trying to do, so that we can make some informed decisions over the next 10 years before the station actually gets here.
Okay. Brian, anything to add?
No, I would just reemphasize what Keith was talking about, about being in front, because this allows us to be better prepared for when the station comes in. As he mentioned, the exact alignment's going to be determined by Sound Transit. This plan does not identify which businesses are going to be taken out. It helps us plan for when the station comes, because the station is going to create an entirely different area around it than it was there now. And that's what we're trying to get ahead of. So it's to plan ahead for what's going to happen. The stations are, the proposed stations, excuse me, are in fairly close proximity, which allows us to do this general plan without knowing the exact location of the stations. So it's, to Keith's point, it's merely to get out in front. But it, the plan itself does not say this business is going and that business is staying.
Okay. Why don't we do this? What, oh, Council President?
I just want to know if there's anything we can do to protect DBM.
Sorry. There is, there is not. I mean, so they're in a location now that is 90% plus likely to be taken out by Sound Transit. Right now, I would say that DBM should be talking to our Economic Development Director about finding maybe another location in Federal Way, so that if they do get displaced, there's a place for them to go.
So Sound Transit would have to pay them to be displaced?
Yes.
And to pay them to?
Relocate as well.
Do we have any role in that?
No.
But is there anything we can do that, I don't know if it's in zoning or whatever, so that we can help them?
So, so Sound Transit has the ability to use eminent domain. You know, the reason why DBM is being discussed now is because Sound Transit is trying to avoid the Indian Cemetery further south, and the I-5 alignment is problematic for them. And so they're looking at other alternatives, and the EIS that they will release will consider a PAC Highway alternative. And so to get the train tracks, basically from I-5 over to PAC Highway, it has to swing through somewhere. And right now, this is where they're looking at swinging it through.
So would you suggest that DBM goes to talk to Sound Transit at one of their regional meetings?
That would absolutely be their best course for right now, because, like I said, it's 10 years down the road. You know, Sound Transit's not buying any properties now, but they are working on plans and designs. And so if there's the ability to, you know, maybe bend it one way or the other and miss DBM, that would be probably a good choice for some.
So they have eminent domain, but if we were to do anything with zoning or anything to increase the value of their property?
So it, it will affect, if we, if we were to upzone the property, and that's not what we're talking about tonight, what we're talking about tonight is adopting a plan, there will be subsequent discussions and actions by the City Council if we are to change any zoning. If there is a higher zoning on the property, it will likely increase the value of the property, which would then, Sound Transit would have to pay that value.
That's my thinking exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Actually, Brian, you have a quick one?
Yeah, I would just reiterate the fact that, reiterate the fact that the alignment, if there's concerns about where that is, to address that to Sound Transit, we do not play a role in that. However, we can be of assistance to DBM. DBM is not a business that we want to lose by any means. So I don't want to say that we're not a part of this. We definitely are, and we want to help them if they are in fact impacted by this, which, to Keith's point, the other alignment along I-5 is very unlikely. So it's going to be one of these other ones that go through the south, South Federal Way area, in which they're likely to be impacted. And so we can play a role in helping them find property in Federal Way, because we don't want to see them go.
Thank you. Keith, let's talk, myself, you, and Brian tomorrow. I'm going to turn this over to the council members here in just a second. But let's make sure that we're going to reach out to Mr. Murphy and his team, and have a sit-down in my office, hopefully as soon as they are able. Councilmember Honda, and then Councilmember McDaniel. Oh, and then we've got two councilmembers over here.
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for coming and talking to us tonight. I know you mentioned that this was your first time coming to a council meeting. For many, many months, and if not years, we've been asking, at least some of us have been asking, where the alignment was going to be for, for this part of the Sound Transit's project. We haven't been giving, given any information as a council. So this is really the first time, at least I have heard, of the fact that this is where they want the train station to go. It wasn't one of the options we had been told about before. I, you know, Sound Transit has taken a lot of property in Federal Way. They took, you know, we have a train station in downtown Federal Way, and we lost some businesses there that we're not able to find a place to relocate in Federal Way. They're, they have 60 acres now in the middle of Federal Way for their maintenance and operation yard, which started out at about 25 acres and grew to 60. And now we're going to lose potentially more property for another train station. And my question is, do we really need a second train station in Federal Way? We have one in downtown. There'll be one in five. And I'm questioning if we actually really need another train station in Federal Way. And anyway, I would like to keep DBM here. I think it'll be really difficult to find other property. Your property's rather large.
It's industrial.
And it's industrial. And I think that's going to be pretty difficult. I know even the school that was just here tonight for their track team is looking for another location because they're based out of Christian Faith Center, which is where the new maintenance yard will be for Sound Transit. So I think as a city, we can voice our opinion to Sound Transit. We've done that before. Didn't help a whole lot, didn't help at all, but we can, we still have a voice and we can, we can use it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, my question is, actually, I had sent an email about pulling this item off consent agenda, and I'm just curious, since we don't usually have a debate on public speaking, if we should just hold off until it's pulled to actually have the legit conversation on it?
We will.
Okay. All right, then I'll hold my conversation till then.
All right, sounds good. Councilmember, I mean, no, Councilmember Walsh, then Councilmember?
Yeah, I was just going to say, considering what Councilmember McDaniel said, I mean, I think that the discussion will be best after he pulls it from the consent agenda, and that we continue the discussion at that point to be more appropriate time.
I wanted to make sure that we had some of it in conversation while, while it was still ripe in the room.
I was just going to echo that. We're going to, this is going to get pulled on the consent agenda, I'm assuming.
Yep.
It came out of land use, and I think there's, I just want to make one comment. There's two discussions going. One is the subarea rezoning, and one is Sound Transit. Although they're linked, we need to decouple them, in my opinion, as we talk about the sub, the zoning issue. And I was the one who voted against it, bringing it forward, and I don't think it's, I mean, I've talked to Keith about it. I think there's a lot more cooking that needs to be done before we pass this, but I think we pull it and have a discussion.
Okay, sounds good. We'll get there quickly. Okay, we've got, thank you very much. We will be in touch, but obviously, we've got this item next. Item six is under presentations. We have a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I would like to invite Jan Barber and Elna Aki from the Lakota Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to the podium. I'll read the proclamation, and then there'll be time for you to make some comments. Proclamation Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas Public Law Number 915, signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th as Constitution Day. And whereas celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution as we pursue it for prosperity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and City Councilmembers of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, to be Constitution Week in Federal Way, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, and reflect on our heritage of freedom. Signed the 17th day of September 2024, by our mayor and the seven council members.
It's our privilege as members of the Lakota Chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, to accept this proclamation for Constitution Week. The DAR was founded in 1890. It's a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer, women's service organization promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through education
Our Constitution assures us a peaceful transfer of power at periodic intervals to leaders whom we, the people, have elected. It sets out certain rights of the people. This document is the basis for our government and is an important part of the history of our country. The United States of America, that great experiment our forefathers began when they signed the Constitution in September 1787, endures due in no small part to the Constitution they wrote. It is only fitting that we take time to reflect on and honor what they accomplished. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. May I suggest, we've got a great deal of interest in, before I get into the presentation about the proposed budget, what about, would the council consent to handling consent agenda, pulling the item, handling this discussion, and then doing the proposed budget?
Excellent idea.
Yeah. Instead of, what I don't want to do is give, give the proposed budget, the governing document, short-tripped, but let's, let's get down to the, to the nitty-gritty here. All right. So we will, we'll come back to the council committee reports after the binding up, my, my binding up budget presentation. So right now, with the consent of, of the body, I will consider item eight, the consent agenda. Item, I'll read the items and ask, which I think we know, one item, G will be pulled. But item A, minutes for the September 3, 2024, regular and special meeting minutes. B, Sacagawea Park Entrance Gate Public Works Contract Change Order. Item C, inter-local agreement between the Seattle Police Department and Federal Way, Police Department Regarding Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC Task Force. Item D, SCOR Jail Services Agreement, Amendment Number Two. Item E, 2022 Asphalt Overlay Project Acceptance. Item F, 2025 Pedestrian Safety Project, 85% status and authorization to bid. Item G, South Station Subarea Plan Approval. H, 2024 to 26 NTS Program On-Call Services Contract Award, Approval to Award. Multiple calls have been made to pull item G. Are there any other items councilmembers would want to pull off the agenda?
I'd like to pull item B.
Okay. Any others, council? All right. Council President, do you have a motion with respect to A, C, D, E, F, and H?
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items A, and then C through F, and then item H.
Second?
It's been a motion, a second, to move those mentioned items forward. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those, those are approved unanimously. Item B, Sacagawea Park Entrance Gate Public Works Contract and Change Order. Councilmember Honda, did you have a question?
I, I do. So this was presented at the Parks Meeting last week, and I asked how it was being funded. And I'm sorry, John, I did not notify you. I was going to pull this ahead of time. But my concern is, after, you know, during the meeting last week, I asked about the REIT funding that Parks has, and thank you for responding to me about that. I'm concerned that there are things that maybe, may not be able to be done because of the lack of REIT funding. And I realize this is, what, $25,000 for the gate at Sacagawea? But if the district doesn't put a gate up on their end of the parking lot, we haven't done anything to protect what we're trying to do there. And I'm wondering if we need to just defer this and maybe keep that money in your budget for other things that need to be done until we get a commitment from the school district.
And, and John, if you could address the ongoing issues of security, garbage, parties at this location on the weekends, and evaluate whether this can wait or not?
And, and I believe that, and I could be wrong on this, councilmember, I believe the gate may be installed. It was, they, they, they were able to go to the original length and then realized, uh-oh, the, the water line was too close, so they had to move it back, which caused them to make an extension. So we were able to pay them the original amount, knowing that there would be a small change order that needed to come back. The first original contract was for under $20,000. So the gate company was able to install the gate, knowing that there'd be a small change order. So the 20, almost $20,000 was already spent on installing the gate, knowing that we would, we worked with the contractor and said, we'll need to go back for the extra dollars. To address the mayor's concern is, we've been having parties showing up at the, at Sacagawea parking lot. And we've been working with our police and school district security. These parties are going sometimes all night long. And neighbors, there's some neighbors who have let us know about it. We've been working with those neighbors to call in the, in the moment, rather than call the next day. They're leaving tons of garbage and causing just real havoc in that parking lot. So it is important that we, that, and besides the fact that the gate is basically installed at this point. So with that, and I believe that's accurate, I'm 98% sure that that's accurate. But if I'm wrong, I'll correct it immediately in the morning. But I think it's important that we do that, and that helps the school district hopefully take some action sooner on their end of the gates.
We've got people in that area that live nearby that are frequently, at the end of the weekend, or sometimes during the weekend. I mean, we've received dozens of, approaching probably, you know, several dozen complaints.
Yeah, and we've worked with all of the, the users who are frequent users of the park that are renters, and they are, they, it's not them, it's other people just coming in and partying in that parking lot after they're gone. But sometimes they're staying all night long.
I, I understand that there is issues. I know last year, we received a few emails about issues there on a weekend.
I know last year we received a few emails about issues there on a weekend, but without, you know, we need to really get then a commitment since it's already been done before we voted on it to here. And I understand that it was below the, the amount of money that we have to vote on it at the time that you ordered it. But we really need then to get the school district to step up and put a gate up also, because the gate's not going to stop people from carrying their things in or whatever they do to get the park.
No, it'll only stop the cars, I agree.
And so it's not a complete answer to what's going on over there. You know, security and presence of police driving by frequently and monitoring the situation will also be very helpful, but, you know, I'm just mindful that, you know, $25,000 here and there add up eventually to things that could be spent on bigger projects that are very necessary for the Parks Department. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Coachmore, excuse me, Council President Coachmore, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of Item B.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, council member?
Oh, no.
Was that a no?
No, I said, no, I voted yes.
You voted yes?
It's there.
Okay, great.
I didn't vote no.
Okay, all right, the vote was unanimous, thank you. All right, now moving on to G, South Station Subarea Plan Approval. Keith, do you have a presentation? Or does anybody have a presentation?
I was not planning a presentation.
Let's get, let's, it's on, it's on the council, we're here, it's on the agenda. Let's, let's go. Do you have anything to present?
I can present a summary from L U T C.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Keith, but let's.
It's in there.
Is it? Okay.
I could have done this. South Station.
Yep.
All right, there you go. We just need to share. And I'm going to hide this video panel.
All right, and Keith, don't feel like you need to rush through it, let's, let's, as they would say, explore the space.
And, and I can, and before I get into this, I, I want to at least, I want to, I want to just say the same thing that Councilmember Dovi did, which is, what we heard, the concerns from DBM is a business that's being displaced by Sound Transit. That's going to happen, that is either is or is not going to happen regardless. The subarea plan is really about, I think, getting the city in front of planning for this part of the city, so that by the time that the infrastructure's in, it's doing what we want it to do. So, with that, the policy question in front of the city council, should the city council approve the South Station Subarea Plan? Okay, the purpose, and this is not my presentation, so I'm going to do my best, so we went ahead and applied for a countywide growth center from, it's a, it's a derivative from Puget Sound Regional Council, which is the transportation planning organization for the four-county area, including King County. And so by, if we were to get the designation of a countywide growth center, it allows the city to apply for transportation grant funding. And so what that does is helps us build street improvements. And as we know, with the, with, with the addition of a light rail station, this area's going to change. People will be driving to this location to get on the train, to get off the train, and so this part of the city's going to change no matter what. And so part of what we're trying to do is get this, position the city in the best place possible, so that we can be successful once this train station is here 10 years from now. So, I apologize for the graphics, this is the outline of the countywide growth center in kind of the yellow. DBM sits right in here, and this is, this is Costco, and Home Depot sits here. It's hard to tell from this graphic, Corliss sits here, that's the storage place, and Lowe's is there. And this is a little bit better, easier to see. The plan is to capitalize on investment from Sound Transit, and to start to plan for the land uses that will be responsive to a light rail station being here. And as we've talked about in our downtown area, you know, really what we're looking for is more of a mix of uses, housing and jobs, which right now, most of this area is jobs. There's a couple apartment complexes, and then a couple streets of single-family homes. So the subarea plan, again, this is a lot of planning boundary stuff, I'm going to kind of pass through that, this is existing land uses. So we have the crossings, which is the shopping center at the southwest corner of Enchanted and 348th. There's four self-storage areas, Jet Chevrolets in our planning area. We have industrial uses like DBM and Corliss. There's office, like New Meyer Engineering, and as I said, single-family, multifamily. There's some, Todd Beamer High School sits down at the south end of our planning area. There's also like Bethel Baptist Church sits in here. And then, kind of the southern boundary to the southwest is Spring Valley, so all of that is permanent open space, which was a logical edge for our planning area. Okay, so part of this is, again, looking at the way that cities typically transform when light rail stations go in, what you can see and what you can anticipate is the land values are going to go up, and the, what's there now in a lot of places will likely be bought out and redeveloped. So we're looking for the addition of about 1,200 housing units in this area, and that helps us get to our 11,260 that we're trying to get to for our next 20-year target, and then jobs going from 2174 to 3100. And this is a little bit of a fuzzier piece for us, because, you know, when we did this planning work, a lot of the office uses were in transition due to the pandemic. You know, as we saw, if you read the Seattle Times this morning, Amazon is requiring their employees to go back to pre-pandemic work schedules, starting in January, and so we're starting to see that office space kind of start to get reoccupied. But when we did the analysis here, and the economic consultant was doing their work, it was hard to really forecast that, that office was a likely outcome for this subarea. Now, 10 years from now, that may be a very different story, and part of this subarea plan talks about looking at it and continuing to evolve it as this area starts to transform between now and 10 years from now, when the light rail station comes in. So, the plan development is 2019 to 2024, that's when we started working on it. We, we had neighborhood meetings at Todd Beamer High School, at the Bethel Baptist Church. We set up a, an engagement page on Engage FW for the South Station area. There were tours of light rail stations, briefings to Planning Commission and L U T C, and so there was kind of a lot of work done with both a planning consultant, a transportation consultant, and an economic consultant to help us understand this area as best as we could. So, this is the vision, and I'll go ahead and read it, since I'm not hurrying. The Federal Way South Station Subarea will provide new residential, commercial, and employment opportunities in a livable and thriving neighborhood. It will be bordered by protected natural areas, including ample green spaces and parks. Your area will feature a safe network of multimodal streets and trails that enhance connectivity and mobility for all residents throughout the subarea and to and from the future light rail station. You know, one of the challenges for this area is just the existing street system. You know, with Pac Highway, Enchanted Parkway, and 348th, we have three very significant streets to actually get to the station if you're trying to get there by bicycle or on foot. And so some of the issues we're dealing with in our downtown station area, like how do you get a pedestrian or a bicycle safely across 320th, we're going to have the same issues down here. And so again, part of the reason why getting the plan in place starts to get us to having the right conversations we should be having. So we had stakeholder groups and property owners, and really, what we decided was, let's just focus the first phase of implementation in this purple area on the map. And so, you know, Costco's not going anywhere, Home Depot's not going anywhere, Children's is not going anywhere, Lowe's is not going anywhere, so really, and, and because we're fairly confident the track's going to come straight across this corner of Enchanted and 348th, and kind of work its way down to Pac Highway, the station is most likely going to be in this purple area. And so knowing that, and knowing that, you know, some of the property owners, for example, we had multiple conversations with the Fana Group, who owns the crossings, they're excited about the rezone, they were, they are excited about getting rezoned, they are excited about having opportunities to turn that into a mixed-use center. They have mixed-use centers in other places in the United States in their portfolio, and they know the economic value of that. So, so we have property owners in this area that are actually excited for this subarea plan to get approved. Corliss, Corliss knows that they are probably in the path as well, and they have purchased this property over here on kind of the west edge to potentially move their batch plant to. And again, part of their urgency has diminished a little bit, given the fact that this is 10 years out, and I think they feel like they have time to make decisions as a, as a company for how to keep this batch plant somewhere in Federal Way or close to, if it can't be in Federal Way. And, and this area down here is owned by South King Fire, that's their maintenance yard, and they understand that, you know what, if someone were to come and offer them money for their property because it was upzoned, they can move their maintenance yard. There is no reason it needs to be there. So, we have had multiple conversations with some of the property owners who've chosen to engage with us. DBM did not until recently, so it is what it is. And so, moving down, these are the existing land uses, commercial and, and multifamily and single-family are the mixes within the area. And this is just, again, talking about getting the plan in place so we can start working on a street grid. You know, these are some of the same conversations we're having with the Commons in downtown about having, kind of breaking up the superblocks, trying to create a finer grain of street network and street grids, so that it can be more walkable and more bikeable at the end of the day. All of these things take time, and they take money. And so, you know, again, putting some of these plans in place, you know, like, this connection from the park and ride over to where potentially the light rail station is going to go, you know, that's going to take time. We don't own any, any of this property, but this is a logical place to put a trail, I believe. And so, again, I think the plan is multifaceted. It handles everything from transportation to land use to utilities, and it talks about, you know, kind of the vision that we're anticipating, which is much more of a, kind of a mid-rise, mixed-use area, at least on some of the properties around the light rail And again, talked about kind of the, the natural environment amenities that are in the area. This will be a lot different than our downtown for a lot of reasons, because just the amount of open space that's to the west of kind of this area. We also talked about, we need a park in this area. You know, when, when you approve the park impact fees, we actually added two parks to the capital projects list for parks, one in the South Station area and one in the downtown area. And so, you know, this allows us to start really looking for property and potentially using money to acquire land for a park. You know, there's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the plan about placemaking and streetscape plans, and doing things to create an actual sense of place for this portion of the city, you know, given the fact that it's transitioning into a mixed-use neighborhood. And as far as zoning, you know, we are suggesting in the comprehensive plan, a change of designation for this area to centers, but it allows a variety of zoning to be there. So, the existing CE zone, Commercial Enterprise Zone, will still be allowed there, but we will have a conversation, assuming the council approves the subarea plan, about upzoning certain properties, and that conversation would start next year. Lot of stuff, all the uses allowed in particular zones. You know, one of the things we talked about for the South Station area was whether or not we would create an overlay, similar to what we did in downtown, either for the view preservation or for the architectural standards. We could do something similar for the South Station area if we felt like it wanted a little bit different architectural character. But these things aren't in the plan now, these things are just ideas for future work for us. So, there we are. That is a quick overview of the subarea plan, and it really is being driven by the fact that there will be a light rail station here in 10 years.
Okay, first, we'll hear from the Chair of L U T C, or Councilmember Dovi, then Councilmember Hunter, then Councilmember McDaniel.
I can go last.
Okay, Councilmember McDaniel, then Councilmember Hunter. Councilmember Dovi?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Keith, for bringing back up the discussion we had in land use. We had a, a lot of, I had a lot of questions in land use, and so did my colleagues, and, you know, we're up here at the dais now talking about this, but we have spent so much time on what we did, we're doing downtown, that this, in my opinion, this plan came through the staff, I think it was 20, how long ago was it, two and a half years ago there was a presentation on it?
It was June of '22, I think we did a fairly detailed presentation.
A very long time ago, and there hasn't been much discussion about it, and it seems to me that we need to put, as a council, need to be taking what the staff has recommended, but bring it back through L U T C to really dig into it. And again, I say we need to decouple the subarea area that we're talking about and the Sound Transit discussion, because you got two battles here. You got Sound Transit and routing, and that's not really a battle, but where we need to influence, and we have our, probably one of our most valuable tax areas in the City of Federal Way that we're about to decimate, because Sound Transit may put their terminal there. So we have two fronts that we need to be fighting this war on. And I applaud the staff for the work and all they've done on this subarea plan, because something's going to happen, but I think we need more input as a council and decision-makers of what that might look like. And, I mean, again, it's on the Consent Agenda, I think it needs to go back to land use, and we need to spend the time, you know, because we're talking about 10 years from now, or nine years from now, and the grants that we may get, you know, big deal. I mean, you always can get grants. But I think we need to put the same effort in this like we did when we looked at what we're going to do downtown with the Target property, and really think through it, and engage the owners of the properties a little bit more. I mean, Keith and his team has done a good job in talking to the ones who want to talk to us, or we knew to talk to. We're fortunate that DBM came forward to talk to us about it, and we need to engage them. And one of the things that I think is really valuable to remember, that business, because they have their land, and it's already in Federal Way, and they can be competitive because they don't have the, the cost of finding because they don't have the cost of finding a new location and relocating, makes those jobs sticky in our city. If we say, hey, you're going to move, they're all of a sudden going to be at a disadvantage to another construction company that already, and I don't know if they own their land or not, I'm assuming they do, but we're going to put them at a disadvantage to be competitive, which brings the money into Federal Way, because we do get sales tax on the things they do. And, you know, we have people working here. So I think we really need to look at it. And there's two things. It's what we want to do as a council, and what staff recommends that we do, and we gyrate through that and figure out what it really is. And then what we can do with sound transit to influence where that terminal may be. And maybe it needs to move over to Highway 99 on the other side of 99 and come down 99 instead of the freeway. I don't know. I mean, that's a ways out there, but we need to be, I think that's the approach we need to take. But I would, you know, I voted against this when it came out of committee. I'm going to vote against it again tonight, not because I think it's bad, but I think we still need to do some more work on it. It's not cooked yet.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in the same vote as Councilmember Dovi. When I saw this on Monday, we had, Thursday is when it hit, I had never seen it before. And it was the weekend, the meeting on Monday, and then consent agenda on this Tuesday, today. We've spent at least six council meetings on RV parking in front of your house. This is way bigger in my mind than RV parking in front of the house. The other thing is, when I saw the plans, it's my issue I always have. The big box stores get cut out, the little guy gets cut, period. The way that it was cut out was to make sure that Lowe's, Home Depot, Costco, those guys were literally cut out of the picture for what our plan was redevelopment in the first phase. Second phase, third phase, don't know about that one. But I feel that there needs to be more time and input and a better understanding. I would love to see a motion to move this back to the committee for further discussion and debate on it. I'd like to say, Keith, thank you for answering the questions. When it first was presented to us, and I shot Keith a bunch of questions about it, I thought we were moving it quicker because of grant purposes. You filled in the answers to my questions, and I appreciate that. And now that I realize that it's not that urgent on the grant side, then I am, I'm in the same mindset of, I will have to vote no on it if it comes forward, but I'd love to vote yes on moving it back to a committee to have a longer discussion and more input on it. The other thing was, is, I want to make one point, because it does bother me. The corner on Pacific and 356 right there is a used tire place. That used tire place hires convicts, or they had in the past. How many people hire convicts in the city? It is a place that actually provided jobs for guys, and it's a miserable job. I remember in my 20s when I was broke, I had to get tires. I couldn't afford new tires. I went there and they took care of me. That picture shows green space, they're blown out, they don't exist, it's a beautiful park. I still remember the guys who helped me out when I need help. That's what I'll remember when I drive by there. So I'm in agreeance. I want to see it go back to committee. Thank you. And thank you guys for showing up. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So I agree that we're not ready to vote on this. First of all, I'm concerned that DBM, excuse me, could not find another location in the City of Federal Way for what they do, and I wouldn't want to lose our business. I also understand that we've tried to fight sound transit, and we're not successful. And if sound transit has this property in their vision for their station, it will probably happen. But that doesn't mean we can't voice our opinion, and we can't support this company and try to get sound transit to find another location. Saying that, we haven't heard from sound transit. We haven't heard where the alignment's going to go. We haven't heard where these stations' site locations might be down there in the south sound area yet. And I would love to get sound transit to come and talk to us about what they know now about coming down into this part of Federal Way. And then my last question is, did the Planning Commission have any input into this?
So the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this, as is required by city code, and the Planning Commission recommended approval through the city council.
When was that?
When?
When? In 2022?
No, like, a month ago, or less.
All right.
My notes are over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
But I do think we need to get sound transit in to talk to us about what they know now.
So Kent Smith is trying to find, they were trying to go on a study session. I don't think that's working out. So they're trying to find a meeting date to meet with the council before they go to their board with a preferred recommendation.
Okay.
So I think that is in the works. It's in Kent Smith's court, as far as I understand.
I appreciate him coming to committee meetings to talk to us, but every single time we ask him, you know, what's going on down in this part of Federal Way with sound transit, he has no information. And I know that's not his fault, but it would be nice if sound transit would communicate with the council, too.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Walsh, and then Council President.
Yeah. Just, first off, I want to commend DBM and their employees on their presentation with the public comment. I think it was very, very effective and brought this to my attention and to the attention of others on the council. One thing that I do think is that, that I get the impression that Mr. Murphy felt that the city was wanting to push DBM out. And I am very confident that that is not the case, that we would very much want to keep DBM here. And my main concern with that is, is that perhaps we need to communicate better to begin with, so that companies know what we want and don't want. And with that, with that, did we reach out to DBM and?
So all the property owners got notice of both the plan and the hearing, and some property owners chose to engage with the city and some did not. DBM did not.
I see DBM commenting back that they're among themselves, that it sounds like there may have not have been very clear there. One thing with the, what they presented anyway, is that, and I have not studied the south, the south station subarea plan in detail, but they indicated that the number of jobs that that plan and the study said there were is not accurate.
So the city got its jobs information from the Washington Department of Employment Securities? So that's usually generated by employers providing the state with the number of employees they have. So that's the best source that we can get for a number of employees through ESD.
Okay. Right. You know, basically, I'm with, in agreement with Councilmember Dovi and Councilmember McDaniel, that is, and Councilmember Honda, that is, you know, premature, we should study this more, and that it should go back to LUTC and for their study.
I do have an update. Sound Transit is scheduled right now to appear before the city council at a study session on November 6th. I just received that information. So November 6th. Okay. Council President?
Well, take.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Can I ask one more thing? With sound transit, I mean, if they do take the property, I know that with the property, with our maintenance yard, that we were responsible just not for paying the cost of the property, but for relocation costs as well.
Yes.
Would sound transit be responsible for the relocation costs?
Yes.
Of that, not just the payment for the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get that in writing?
Okay. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Keith. I am one of those people that voted yes to move forward this item to the consent agenda, with the understanding, or my assumption at the time, that sound transit most likely will take over this location. And also, based on that information, I want staff to have the time they needed to plan ahead, right? And today, I heard several people from DBM that were here and raised their concern. And I agree with most of the council members today that this item needs to be studied a little bit further, and I'm okay of sending this back to LUTC for further consideration. So I just want to say that. But thank you very much.
Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, then like to speak to it.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that item G, the south station subarea plan approval, be pulled from the consent agenda, moved back to land use for further study.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I understand that, you know, sometimes, you're a busy business, and so sometimes when you get notified, you don't understand what's going on. So now you're part of us, so you're clued in. So what I'd like to have is that when we do discuss this whole issue at land use, what we can do to help our businesses, what we can do to get sound transit to understand that we are going to be supporting our businesses and to do the best that we can for them, whether that means upzoning, or whether that means some kind of pressure, or help finding them new place to move that's within our city limits, whatever, or move the garage or station somewhere else. But I'd just like to have more information on that. So that's all.
All right. Councilwoman Dovi.
I want to make one comment. Everybody on the council got this book. I think it's 800 pages.
Thank you so much.
And the reason I'm showing that, make that comment, what we're doing, which I think is right, is going to take a huge commitment from everybody on this council. We might have to have additional meetings. We're putting a tremendous amount of staff time on our community development, which we need to do. I mean, I'm not opposed. I'm not saying that's wrong. And I want to do this right, but I just want to make sure everybody knows, sending it back to LUTC is probably going to be extra meetings or a subcommittee to look at this. And I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, because I agree, we need to send it back, build on the work that's been done, and ask some serious questions with sound transit. So that's my only comment. So I support sending it back to LUTC.
Okay. Since sound transit will be here to give us a presentation at the November 6th meeting, council meeting, will you be here?
Yeah, we may want to go visit, knock on the president's door behead of that.
Okay. All right. So there's been a motion and a second to, not table it, but send it back to committee for further review, as determined by the Chair of the Committee, and could require several hearings or yet to be determined. But this will, there's a motion to send it back to committee for review. There's been, it's been a motion, a second, and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passed unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. Again, it was very good to hear from you, very important. Okay. Now, we are back to the regular course of the meeting. Let's see here. And now we are at the point where we're at the presentation of the mayor's 2025 to 2026 biennial budget.
Do we get to do? Oh, all right.
We'll get there. Yes, yes.
You're on track.
I am. I am. Thank you. Okay. All right. So, you know, let's see here. The proposed budget, that, this is the mayor's proposed budget that I was required to provide to council, is the beginning of a discussion. And it represents a great deal of work, a great deal of, you know, leadership by the staff, and collaboration and partnership, and also hearing, you know, from everybody internal. Now, this is, this has been sent over to the council, was posted on the city's website on Friday, August 30th. Copies were printed and distributed to the city council. And also, I want to make sure, anyone can go to the city website, navigate to the Finance Department, and you can't miss it, it's the only thing above the fold, and it takes up the entire screen. The internal timeline to develop the budget started January 1st. As we track revenues and expenditures and evaluate the services, the city delivers day in and day out. In fact, I often refer to city government as a service delivery organization. So, next slide. So these were the priorities that we went, that we started for, started analyzing the budget with. That's safety and security of our residents and businesses. Number two, achieve a balanced budget. We're required by law, and it's also just absolutely critical that we do so, for all funds. Assure prioritized city services across the board. Maintain the city's fiscal health and maintain city infrastructure. Now, when I say fiscal health, it is, it's not just about fixing the budget for a year or two. There are many city governments and governments do what they call one-time funding. That's not structurally balanced. And what's referred to as structurally balanced is that ongoing revenues meet ongoing needs. And that is what we have here. We're incredibly fortunate to have Steve Groom as our Finance Director. Brian Davis has been working with me to set expectations, and then meetings have occurred, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But we also have the ongoing, you know, there's really two budgets. There's the ongoing operations budget and also the capital budget. And we'll get into that. And the capital budget is where we address infrastructure. And it's one of those, you know, if you don't take care of it, it will take care of you. You've got to invest in infrastructure. Next slide. Okay. Now, we always, we have always navigated through economic uncertainty when we needed to, and there's never enough money to go around, but, you know, we have a history of making sure that we've done so in a very responsible way. During the past nearly 11 years that I've been mayor, we have never laid off one person because of fiscal drawbacks. And I think that's very important. The other thing is, is that this city went probably about, I think, six years without a cost of living adjustment for its employees, and that put us at a tremendous disadvantage in the region. And ever since I've been mayor, one of the very first things I did was make sure that we got that COLA. Now, COLA is a critical thing, because what happens is, you know, you spend probably 75% of your resources at a city government on personnel. Your personnel are the people that show up every day, you're the greatest ambassadors, they are really the great resource. If you don't pay them well, if you don't take care of them, they will leave. And that institutional knowledge is going out the door, and the skills with which they come to the job, going out the door is not a good thing. And that's one of the things we've had to do, is really do market adjustments and making sure that we're brutally honest with ourselves about where we're at with the marketplace. Okay. So the challenge is that we have, you know, we had decline, as we heard in the budget presentation during the, during the study session earlier, we've got declining sales tax, just because of the environment we're in, and REIT. REIT is real estate excise tax. It is a function of when property is sold, it is the portion that comes to the City of Federal Way. REIT money does not go to the general fund. REIT goes to fund capital projects. Again, sort of a whole, there are certain streams, and there are certain, but I think it is important. However, those REIT revenues are down. The high interest rates that were experienced in the past year have had an impact on commercial properties. And REIT has normally been a source of funding that we can rely on pretty heavily, but that has been down, and it's been a challenge. And we prioritize prudently, because there's always more needs than money. All right. Next slide. All right. These are the accomplishments with the budget. Now, remember what I said is, regarding to capital budget. One of the critical issues with regard to capital budget is our maintenance and operation facility, otherwise known as the M&amp;O facility. In parents, it says $53 million. That'll be paid over time. It's $3 million annual debt service. And again, that is, we can always count on the sufficient amount with the real estate excise tax and SWIM, which is surface water management. That's out of Public Works, it's a dedicated funded system. But the M&amp;O facility was, you know, we'll talk about that in a moment. 20 years in the planning, it absolutely had to happen because of the condition, or almost the lack thereof, of an ability to keep our tools and keep our employees. Many of our employees in Parks and Public Works have literally been working out of their work trucks, a completely unacceptable situation that we find ourselves in. So that's why we've invested, and we are in the process of investing and moving forward. The M&amp;O facility will be completed next year. Is that correct, Desiree? Sometime.
Early 2026.
That's right. Early 2026. That's right. Thank you. All right. City's Eden Financial System, we talked about that. System, we talked about that. Sorry. The financial system, one point two million dollars. There are just certain things, we all experience this in our household, in our, in our lives. There are certain things that are absolute musts. And you, if you don't have a good financial system, and good systems that can keep track of things, especially something as important as a financial system, you know, chaos ensues. So, one point two million dollars is where we're at there. Police officers and cars, that was a six hundred thousand dollar investment, to making sure that we're adding officers, adding to a historic, a proposed historic high, to one hundred and fifty-four officers. We're at one hundred and fifty budgeted now, and those require cars to go with them, and replacement cars, which we'll talk about. Insurance increases were half a million dollars. Public Safety Communications, animal services, body camera costs. Animal services, we, you know, we contract. That has, the anticipated increase of that is something that we're dealing with. And the essential cost of living increase, which will be, and we'll talk about later, at three point five per year, to keep pace with inflation and other governments. All right. How do we balance the budget? Number one, as I've referenced, leadership and teamwork. All departments participated. There's been a great deal of collaboration, prioritizing highest citywide needs, line-by-line review, and the entire budget scrubbed. And so we went, we really, there are certain things that just are absolute requirements. When the heat bill goes up, when the cost of jail goes up, there are just certain bills that absolutely have to get paid. And then there are some discretionary needs as well. Comprehensive needs assessment, and that's what we have been ongoing since, during this entire year, and a waiting list ready to serve us in the, in future budget amendments. Next. Revenues. Summer up. The investment revenue has been up, and we're going to talk about that later, but we, you know, where we used to make eighty thousand dollars per year in investment, interest income, or just interest income, you know, we normally have, we're right around about, let's call it just, just to ballpark it, around a hundred million dollars on hand at any particular time in our, in our bank accounts. We were making eighty thousand dollars a year. Thanks to the magicians that we have working for us in the, in our hard-working civil servants, we have been making about three hundred and seventy thousand, excuse me, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy million per year. No, no, three, sorry, three point seven million per year, for a total of seven point six. That number is now going up to four million per year, for an estimate of eight million dollars for the biennial. So, three point seven five, that's going to increase to four million a year, and that is astounding. And we're doing that through investment revenue, and, and we'll talk about that. Utility taxes up, permit fees are up. Summer down, sales tax and REIT, as we discussed. Next. Okay, we're reevaluating vehicle replacement. We'll ask Public Works and PD fleet to defer two cars per year. Manage reserves, maintain fund balance minimums, redeploy prior-year savings and fund balances, redeploy known savings. Some ARPA savings have been realized. We capture department needs, captured department needs are prioritized on a waitlist. And year-round plan to execute and course correction. Next. Okay, and this, again, common sense investing. Rates continue to be high. Our reserves are put to work, and they, and it's been a great benefit to us. We pool the balances of all city funds. Our laddered portfolio of treasuries and agencies preserves income out of five years. As I said a few moments ago, annual investment interest should be about four million dollars per year, both years of this biennial budget. That is a tremendous successful, success story. All right, next. All right, safety and security of residents and businesses, that's our absolute top priority. We're proposing to add four additional officers, one additional support staff, four additional police cars, and that comes with equipment, body cameras, training costs. Next. Okay, I mentioned before the operation maintenance facility. This was literally twenty years in the process. This is our Parks and Public Works crews on the day that we, our recent picture where we had all of them gathered together. We had a severely deteriorated in dated facilities. That's an investment in our future, our personnel, and our community. It's what we refer to as hundred-year infrastructure. Next. And there it is, hundred-year infrastructure. To improve the facility's ability to deliver core services. We acquired the land at six million. Construction will cost forty-seven million. Debt service at three million dollars per year. And again, that's coming from REIT and SWIM, or surface water management out of Public Works. The, down below, you'll see the diagrams, and to the right as well. We have an excellent credit rating at AA2, just, I think, two notches below AAA. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next. Okay, continuing challenges. Chronic budget squeeze created by the one percent property tax cap on existing property. That's just the law of the land. Secular economy presents funding challenges, sales tax, and REIT, as we've discussed. Perpetual vehicle replacement is always compounded by inflation and staff growth. It's just something you must plan for in the future. And perpetual infrastructure maintenance is a permanent challenge. That's roads, you know, just infrastructure, whether it's repairing the roof on this building, the elevator, you know, certain things, you know, in city government. Next. Okay, we, despite all those challenges, we have a balanced budget, a proposed balanced budget, across all funds. It delivers top priority services, ten-year infrastructure, a plan for next-dollar needs. City Council will need your input, policy direction, and deliberation, and then adoption. Next. These are our study sessions tonight. Next week, the 23rd, the 25th, October 1st, and October 15th. All at 5:00 PM. Next. All right, so council, that's the proposed budget. The, there's a whole lot. In fact, actually, we've got, the proposed budget is in a big notebook, or during the study session, our Finance Director went through this on how to navigate this, and, and over the course of the budget, you know, we want to, the most important thing is, we want to hear from the public. We want, you know, it is said that you could tell the priorities of a local government, or any government, by how it spends its money and its governing document. This budget will be the governing document of the city about where we're putting our money. We need to hear from our community. We need to, we need to make sure we've got a great conversation. We'll need to hear from the staff that's already been working hard, and it's our, it's our job to sharpen our pencils, and those come with erasers, and we'll, we'll do our absolute best to meet the needs and the concerns of the council and the community. And with that, council, do you have any questions? Okay, all right. Well, it's going to be a good budget year and process. I would very much appreciate your, your collaboration and partnership, and look forward to a very productive process. Okay, now, now we're on to council committee and regional committee reports. Item seven, Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
(laughing) Too many jacks to be able to get it right, so, anyway.
Exactly, yes.
All right, the, the, we had our meeting last week, week ago this evening, and Items B, C, and D came out of that, came out of that meeting. Our next meeting will be October 8th. Also, just backing, well, I'll have a couple of other comments, but I'll save them for my report at the end of the, of the meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Though there probably won't be anybody here to listen to it, so anyway.
All right. Land Use and Transportation, Councilmember Doby.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have our meeting the first Monday of October, bless you, at 5:00 PM. I don't have my calendar here, so I can't tell you the date, but, what's that?
Seven.
The seventh, October 7th. Again, I'm going to put this book up. There's, I think, eight hundred pages. We're going to go through, what is it, ninety minutes, the first, or forty-five minutes on the first meeting?
At least forty-five minutes.
At least forty-five minutes.
The first three chapters.
And plus the rest of our agenda. And then we'll revisit this again the next meeting in November, and I think it's ninety minutes, because it's bigger. So, and then we're going to work in the sub-plan that we all discussed, so I'm just, you're going to get a real, we're all going to get a real lesson in land use for the next ninety days. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, September 24th, at 5:00 PM in this room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asefa Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Last week, the committee met, and we talked about Tourism Enhancement Grant, and approved for a total of five hundred thousand, around that, which is going to come to council for approval. And these grants were really, I mean, the discussion and the conversations were very solid, and the committee really looked deep into the funding, because these were just high, high dollar values. And so, we're able to get through them, and we had enough funding to, to, to do that, and it really enhanced tourism in Federal Way, and we're looking, we're excited about that. What's so great about this committee is that we have the hotels, as well as recipients. So, coming together, one voice, and then trying to figure out how to, one, promote Federal Way, and then, secondly, how these hotels can also benefit from people coming to Federal Way. So, it's always great to have both sides at the table, so there's a robust discussion to come up with the, with the final decision as to how much to fund, and why we're funding them. So there's always the why behind it, which makes this conversation really great. And so, wanted to share that. And our next meeting, actually, we don't have one set yet, but our next one is going to be when we have another application for us to review. And also, we're still waiting to fill some positions on the committee, so that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Regional committees report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Sound Cities has put out their call for 2025 applications for regional committees and boards. The call came out yesterday, well, it came out last week, but the official email came out yesterday, went to all council members, as far as I know, from Leah@SCA, if you want to look for that. Applications must be turned in by the end of the Business Day on Thursday, October 17th, 2024. The, if you go to the email, you can click on a list of the positions that they anticipate that will be open, and what those positions do, and the time commitment, if you're interested. And if you have any questions, you can ask me, or you can, Councilmember Asefa Dawson has served on a number of SCA committees, too.
Can I add to that quickly?
Sure.
So, if anybody's interested, I think maybe Council President can help us coordinate, because if two council members apply for the same position, both would be canceled. They won't accept two applications for the same, for the same position.
They will notify you that one, one person from the city needs to step aside, take the application out. They will only take one.
Actually, they said they'll take, they'll cancel both.
They'll only take one person from each city for each Board or Commission. The Senior Commission tomorrow is having their, on September 18th, is having their Senior Commission Connection Meeting, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Federal Way Community Center. Special guest will be Emergency Manager Kevin Pelley. They do serve a light lunch, and he's back there. Thank you for, for doing that tomorrow. I really appreciate it. I know they're looking forward to it, and there's going to be a lot of seniors there. That room fills up. So, thank you for doing that. The senior reading program is, we're partnering with the Federal Way Public Schools to read to elementary school students beginning this fall, and it's sponsored by the Federal Way Senior Advisory Commission. As of last Wednesday at our meeting, we had twenty-six volunteers, so really cool. You do need to be, go through the application process at the school district to be approved to volunteer in the schools. And if you volunteer, if you put your name out, and we will contact you as to how to do that. But we are really excited by that, looking forward to that. On last Tuesday, September 10th, the Domestic Violence Initiative Group for King County met at Kent City Hall, and we had a DVI Task Force Networking Event. I would like, I'm on that committee. I'd like to thank Presiding Judge David Larson, Police Commander Coffey, Councilmember Leah Asefa Dawson, and Federal Way Task Force members Janet Chance and Lena, and I cannot remember her last name, but she is, provides counseling and education for DVI folks. They all attended. We had sixty-eight participants who were there. We, this is a coalition that is run by King County, and David Martin, who I know that our mayor knows, is a King County Senior Deputy Prosecutor, and he is, he is managing the data. And South King County has the highest amounts of domestic violence in the county, which is really important that we get, you know, that we provide the services and help the victims as we can. So it was pretty interesting. If anyone wants any information, or you want to look at the data that David Martin has compiled, I can direct you there. It's, it is pretty interesting and kind of scary. And then Skateboard, of which I'm Chair, which is a transportation committee. On Friday, we had a joint transportation boards meeting in King County. There are three transportation boards in King County, and we met at PSRC in Seattle, and we heard from Metro, Sound Transit, WashDOT, and PSRC Regional Trends and Updates. And that was pretty interesting. I wanted to also talk about, yes, I think it was yesterday, Wednesday, I can't remember, I, no, Monday. Council President, myself, and School Board Director Lakisha Phillips, along with Amy from our office, had a Zoom call with the Metro Parks in Tacoma. They have, Metro Parks has a really amazing program where they have after-school programs for their elementary schools, and their middle schools. And it's really amazing, because the middle schools, there's no cost for the middle schools to, students to attend. And it's a program that we would love to have something like that happen in Federal Way. And so, we had heard about it a few months ago. Amy was able to connect us with Metro Parks. In Tacoma, the parks, Metro Parks is separate from the Tacoma Council, so it's, it's a different organization, and they have different funding, a different board. But they told us how their program works. We'll be talking more with the school district on how we can perhaps get something like that going here in Federal Way. And one of the things that one of the Metro Parks employees said, which I truly believe, and I wish we could just embrace here in Federal Way, is that every school should be a community center. And that really is true. I've always believed that. I, I would love to see us embrace that and work with that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Council President, Coach Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. So my job is to be kind of the catch-all for the mayor. So, here's some of the catch. Some of the citizens would like to know what's going on with Bailey's since it's been torn down, and maybe we could get a little report on that at one of our next meeting. Just to let you know, we'll be having some ongoing discussions with the farmer's market about how to move forward. I just want to correct the Federal Way Mayor, in their event calendar, it says that our meet and greet is September 21st, which is correct. It was going to be the 21st with the school board members and the council, but it's been changed to October 5th. So we'll send a little note to the mayor, changing that on their event calendar. But if you could just note, coming to October 5th, Starbucks in front of Safeway on 320th, right off Pack Highway, from 10:00 to noon on October 5th. And after that, go over to Steel Lake, because master builders are going to be planting a tree at Steel Lake. So that should be interesting. I just want to announce that Bob McKenzie, a volunteer in Federal Way, who's volunteered for many, many years, passed away recently. And so, if you didn't know that. Councilmember Honda had a good idea, Mayor, which is, we used to have a coffee cart downstairs in the lobby.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be nice if we could maybe put out an RFP and see if somebody would be willing to put a cart down there again.
Put that again. It's great. I know, we did that for years. John, let's talk about that tomorrow.
A coffee cart in the lobby.
Did you hear that?
How do we get a coffee?
Sorry, you're breaking up, sir.
(laughing).
See, this is exactly, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
Okay, and then, you know, it was really interesting hearing Officer Helena talk about Dexter. I don't, did he used to be called, our dog used to be called Darth Vader?
We had a Vader.
A Vader, Vader, yeah, I remember that. Well, anyway, now it's Dexter, but I don't know if she, it's the, it's, oh, she has her own dog.
Vader is still in service with Corporal Cedarburg.
Oh.
Officer Str- Officer Stratton was a canine handler from her previous agency.
Oh.
She'll be bringing her dog over.
Oh, that's what I was going to suggest.
So we'll be adding our second dog.
Could she bring the dog here, just to introduce?
Yeah, do we have to comment?
We'd love to see him.
Okay. I will schedule it in the future when the dog completes his training. We'll bring him to council.
Thank you. That'd be fun. Thank you very much. Okay. And then finally, I did have a meeting with the Federal Way Youth Symphony, the Korean Youth Symphony. These are some of the kids that go around and pick up the litter in front of QFC, not QFC, HFC, and around the, around the city. Anyway, Federal Way Korean Youth Symphony, they're very, very good. They're going to be going to Korea next spring, I think, next spring or summer. But they're going to come and give us a little presentation at our November the 6th council meeting. So if you're here for November 6, you get a little bit of a treat. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. So Keith and Brian, what would be the, and we've got Ryan in the back of the room, what would be the, at the next meeting, could we, we just do a brief, like just an update on information with regard to the former Bally site? It's private property. Is that, what would be the best way to address that?
Any way you want.
I love that. Exactly. Okay, well, let's do this. Let's add it to the agenda. But let's make sure it's after public comment, because we want to make sure, moving forward, that we don't load up the agenda prior to public comment. So can we put it on presentations at the next meeting? Okay, just very briefly.
Two slides.
Yeah, very good. Okay. But still, stuff adds up. We want to make sure we get to the public comment, which is the priority. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Okay, now, we are, oh, and do you want to just explain real briefly about, you mentioned the public, the farmer's market.
We're in discussions with the market, the farmer's market, how to move forward with the market. So without getting into any of that, just so you know, there's a committee meeting with the market folks, and we're going to be moving forward. I'm new and approved. It's coming, hopefully, to an area near you soon. So that's about all I can say. I'm not sure how it's going to be. But we have some of the council members, Councilmember Honda and Councilmember Doby are on the committee with me. And as I said, I'm the catch-all for the mayor. So sort of the garbage can, garbage in, garbage out. So we'll be talking a little bit with the farmer's market. We all love the farmer's market. And so how to improve that and how to move forward.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we are on to item nine, council business, proposed settlement in the matter of Graham Contracting LTD versus City of Federal Way. Brief presentation by our city attorney, Ranco.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm very happy to be presenting this item tonight. This is a matter that has been languishing with the city for over four years, or almost four years. We're hitting the four-year mark next week, I think. It is settlement of the claim, of all claims, in the matter of Graham Construction LTD versus the City of Federal Way. So a little bit of background, Graham Construction LTD is a very large company. They're a Canadian company. They decided to move down to Washington, start exploring this market. They were the lowest responsive bidder for the last phase of the Highway 99 construction project. So 348th to the south border of the city, they did paving and shoulder modifications and island modifications. Almost immediately, the project fell behind schedule. They seemed to be a little out of their element doing roadwork. I think they're mostly focused on other types of work in other markets. They attributed a lot of their delay to the city. We, of course, denied that. At the end of the day, the project did come in a little late, and then they filed a claim, two claims. First, there was a claim for $10 million, then they, we denied that claim, then they filed another claim for $11.9 million on a project that was almost that amount of money. I think it was a $15 million project. So we denied that claim as well. Graham filed suit in October of 2020. This was intense litigation, very expensive, thousands and thousands of documents. We spent a lot of money on attorneys and document handling, things like that. The parties, both us and Graham, filed cross motions, meaning we both pointed the finger at each other, summary judgment, saying, you're wrong, no, you're wrong. The trial court resoundingly ruled in our favor. It was not even close. Graham appealed that to the appellate courts. They lost at the appellate level. Graham appealed that to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court declined review. On remand from the Supreme Court or from the appellate court, the trial court awarded $1.4 million in attorney's fees to date. It's important to note that some of the summary judgment motions, they were not for all the claims. We focused the summary judgment motion, motions on about 80% to 90% of the claims that we felt were the proper subject of a summary judgment, meaning that it was indisputable. The facts were, everyone agreed on the facts, as we disagreed on what the facts meant. The court awarded this $1.4 million award. I think at that point, Graham started, there was new management, there was new people running the projects, and I think they had had enough, and they decided to approach us to mediate and try to just close this thing out. So I was skeptical. We went to mediation, very skeptical, because they fought us tooth and nail in every, every way. Like, the entire course of this litigation's been very contentious. They've never conceded anything. But at the end of the day, we were able to reach a tentative agreement. So the proposed settlement is that Graham will pay us $750,000, which is about half of our accrued attorney's fees so far. They'll release all claims against the city, and that will end this litigation. Also, very importantly, part of the agreement is that Graham and the city agree not to do business with each other anymore. So they will not be bidding on our projects, and if they forget and do bid on one of our projects, we will have a great reason to throw out their bid. So, any questions?
Okay. Any questions, council? Council President, do you have a motion?
Thank you very much. And good job, Brian. Appreciate that. I move approval of the proposed settlement agreement and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
Second.
All right. It's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passed unanimously. Okay, now we are on to item B, 9B addition of 2024 council goal to prioritize airport issues. Bill Vodino is not with us this evening, but Brian Davis will fill in. And-
All right. Good evening again, mayor and council. I don't see the, I'm filling in for my friend, Bill Vodino. Happy to do so. I think this is the-
Yep.
-presentation that was given to the LUTC, so I'm going to use that one.
Yeah, that is. That's the right one.
Okay. All right. Oops. Let's go here. Okay, so back in March, the council discussed adding, well, discussed your goals based on the feedback that you provided at the retreat. One thing that we discussed later in March was the addition of a fifth goal regarding the airport. And the direction at the time from the council was to take it back to committee to discuss because it was presented to you somewhat at the last minute, and you wanted to have time to digest it and have it discussed at committee, and so that's what happened most recently at the LUTC. The specific goal here is in yellow, highlight air emissions, noise, safety issues, and the upcoming SCA Airport Master Plan Public Process for Airport Expansion. So the, whether or not you adopt this goal, we will still participate in the discussions with the port regarding their, what is coinciding with the timing of this, which is their Sustainable Airport Master Plan, which is separate from, again, the goal that is proposed before you. The goal would merely just emphasize that we are, in fact, as a city, participating in that plan. But again, regardless of whether you adopt it or not, we're still going to do so. The Sustainable Airport Master Plan, or SAMP, there's some, this is a federal and state environmental review, so there's lots of acronyms. So the SAMP is going to look at the airport and its needs. It's going to be expanding quite a bit in the future. It's, I think the next slide talks about, yeah, so it's going to expand, from 2017 to 2027, it's going to expand by nearly 20 million passengers, and then in 2034, by another 10 million, to 66 million. So the growth at the Seattle Tacoma International Airport is significant. And with the added use of the airport, or the added flights in the airport, there's additional impacts to the surrounding community, both in terms of traffic, land, and noise, since we are in the flight path. So some of the near-term projects on the SAMP is to provide additional gates, an entirely new terminal, high-speed taxiway turnoffs, added cargo facilities, and 30 other projects to improve safety and efficiency and the like. So this is the key slide for, as far as the timing goes. NEPA is the, is the environmental process for federal regulations, and SEPA is the process for state environmental regulations. So we anticipate that they will be releasing the, a comment period for the NEPA part of it. That's, again, that's the, or the national, I guess is a better way of saying it, and national versus state here shortly, quarter four, which we are going to be here in a couple weeks. So we have, we will be engaged with the port on reviewing that document, and then next, right around the middle of next year is when they're going to release the environmental impact statement for the state portion of the environmental review of the, of the expansion. So again, we're talking, this is a little bit more than what we need to do tonight, but we basically just proposed before you is, if whether or not you want to adopt the goal to, to your goals. Talked about that already. There's a comment period. We're going to be asking the port to extend the typical 30-day comment period to 60 days. And, let's see here. And this is the question. Should the, it says LUTC here, but I didn't have a presentation for you tonight. So should the council adopt the goal that I, let's see if it's listed here. Yeah, let me go back to it. Should you adopt that yellow quoted text as one of your goals? That's the question before you, and the mayor recommends that you do. Happy to answer questions.
Yes, we should.
Okay. Do I see any lights on? Okay, one sec. Seeing no lights on. Council President Kuchmore, do you have?
Oh, I would just say that, you know, this is a huge increase in what will occur over at the airport if this happens. And there are many, many neighborhoods in Federal Way that are already impacted by airplane noise, and it's, some of them, you can't even be in your backyard. It's so bad. And this will just have a huge impact on Federal Way. We need to do what we can do and speak loudly and speak frequently about this.
Here, here. All right. Council President Kuchmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of adding prioritizing airport issues to the 2024 City Council Goals.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right. Item 10, ordinances. First reading, item A, Council Bill 885, ordinance revising federal revised code 8.500.101, parking recreational vehicles on city streets. First, we'll have a presentation from Kent Van Elstein, our Assistant City Attorney. Kent.
I believe we have had six presentations on the topic of parking RVs outside of people's properties. Hopefully, this is the lucky seventh presentation, and we've got it right this time. So one more time for councils, to refresh councils' memory, in March, you passed ordinance number 24983, which prohibited parking of RVs on all city streets except for those streets in residential areas. So the purpose of this ordinance would be to also prohibit parking of RVs on city streets in residential areas with one exception, that exception being for parking an RV in front of the RV owner or operator's home for loading and unloading purposes for a period of up to 48 hours. And with the recommendation from the last LUTC meeting, that there be a required city permit for such parking. Residents would be required to get the permit from the city and prominently display the permit on the windshield of the RV. The intent is that the permit would be, one, free, two, easily obtainable online, three, easily printable for displaying on the vehicle, and four, contain a clear expiration time and date, which would aid in enforcement of the 48-hour parking rule for police. And with that, the options are to forward the proposed ordinance to second reading, or do not forward it and provide direction to staff.
Council, any questions? Kent. All right. Councilmember Honda.
You know, as I said before, I think this will be very difficult to enforce. Well, we understand what's going on. Many people don't follow the council and don't understand what we're passing and why we're passing it. And I think this will be very, I would be surprised if many folks that park their RVs in front of their homes to do this will actually go online to get a permit or even know that they need to do that. And so I just think it'll be really hard to enforce. And I know it's going to pass, so I'll be supporting it tonight. I did vote against it before, but I just don't think it'll be very easy to enforce.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Doby, then Councilwoman Walsh.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I think, I believe that having the simple permit that you can get online, people will learn, and they will know, and it gives our officers the ability to police the RVs on city streets in front of houses that shouldn't be there. And then there'll be a couple bumps on the road, I'm sure. But once, like anything else, it gets started, and people understand that it's okay to park there if you have a permit for two days while you're loading, unloading, we won't have a problem. But this takes the ambiguity out of the officer who gets called by another person and says, there's an RV in front of my house. We need to deal with it. And it cleans our streets up, and it also eliminates the possibility of people from Seattle coming down and parking motor homes in places we don't want them to be. So I support this full-heartedly. And it has gone through this committee and council, what, seven times, I think. So it has been a long time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Well, I agree with Councilmember Honda that it is not perfect. However, I think it's as good as what we're going to come up with. And let's not let the, trying to achieve the perfect, get in the way of passing something that'll be good and beneficial to our city.
There's a Churchill quote in there somewhere, but we'll leave it there. Okay.
I got one comment.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Actually, one question and a comment. A question is, do we know what the fine will be?
I don't think there would be a fine associated with this.
So what's the-
Sanction.
The sanction is, you got to move your car, just like there would, where you have to move the RV, right? So the police would come and say, look, you don't have the required permit. You're not loading and unloading. You need to either obtain the required permit or move this along.
Okay.
And if they don't?
And if they don't, then, then we'd have to, it's a, it's a code violation, so that we could take enforcement measures, I guess, over time that could potentially involve in maybe an infraction or something like that. But, but there's no particular fine that's associated with this violation.
So there's no teeth, actually, in this?
Other than the fact that it's illegal, and the police will be able to tell them this is illegal.
There's a lot of illegal stuff I watch every day.
Indeed.
Yeah. All right. Well, I like the idea that we came together to come to the conclusion that putting on that little sticker or the permit was a nice catch. I thought it had more teeth in it, but I guess it is what it is this time. Thank you.
All right. Chief?
At minimum, there's state law. We could certainly tag it as an abandoned vehicle and come back and tow it within 24 hours.
There you go. All right. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Councilwoman Walsh, did you already, you already spoke? Councilwoman Walsh, did you already, you already spoke? Okay.
I already did.
All right, great.
Don't let the perfect get in the way of the good.
That's right, I totally remember that. Okay, thank you. All right. Pop a comment, any?
No, Mayor.
All right. City Clerk, would you please read, or read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 885, ordinance revising federal revised code 850010, parking recreational vehicles on city streets. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington relating to recreational vehicles parking on city streets, amending federal revised code 850010.
Okay, Councilwoman W.
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the October 1st, 2024 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I voted aye because, you know, I, I still would like to see some kind of fine if they don't do it, but I don't anticipate that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I captured it. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't have very good hearing sometimes, at least I'm told that. Is this thing on? Okay, second, second reading and enactment, item B, Council Bill 884, ordinance, federal revised code, Title 19, amendments to the parking of recreational vehicles on residential, this is the second reading, on residential properties. Would the city clerk please read, please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 884, ordinance, federal revised code, Title 19, amendments to the parking of recreational vehicles on residential properties. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington relating to regulating the parking of recreational vehicles, utility trailers and boats in residential zones, amending federal revised code 1905210, 19130260, and 19130290, and repealing federal revised code 19130270, and 19130280.
Councilwoman W.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, we have a unanimity tonight. All right, item 11, council report, second meeting of the month, we'll start with Councilmember Number Six, Councilmember W.
Okay. Number seven. I'm going to show this book one more time, because it's great reading at night, 800 pages. We all should be thankful that Keith and his staff put it together for us for land use. Second, I'd like to mention, I was fortunate enough to go spend an hour with stand-up down in the Hailobos the other day, Saturday, cleaning up garbage, and I had never been in the Hailobos that far back, and at this camp where somebody had lived for a long time. And in my hour of work, I was able to pick up seven black, huge bags of plastic that somebody had left there in a very small area. So, I wanted to thank the stand-up group for going back into this place that I wouldn't want to walk again, because it was so wet and muddy, and branches everywhere, and trees. But they did a great job cleaning up a camp in the middle of the Hailobos, polluting, you know, polluting the area with trash, and took down the tents, and it's now back to more normal than it was. And the park staff was amazing there, they were helping load everything in the dumpsters. I think there was two full dumpsters, 30 cubic yards or whatever they were, they're huge. And the officer who came in and made sure it was safe for everybody before they went back there. So, it was a great effort. I want to thank the group and the staff and everybody that went out there, it was a good effort. And lastly, I wanted to just put a plug in for financial training that's going to start at the end of the month. I think we've had 20 people sign up so far.
Yep.
And I think we have a little bit more room, and I think that'll bring us up to 86 people so far, or add on, so it's a program that's growing, and people are getting help, so I want to give a plug for those volunteer people that are teaching it, and encourage any citizen to take advantage of it, because there's daycare, and treats, and great knowledge to learn. Thank you.
And thank you, councilmember, and the, the support among the council with this. There are several members of the council that have been very supportive of this, just want to say thank, thank you to them, you and them. Councilwoman Walsh?
I would first like to, to thank Keith and Jack for helping us with any insomnia that we, that we may have. So, anyway.
Could you imagine being cold at a dais without a prepared PowerPoint to summarize that book? Way to go, Keith.
So, hey, this last week has been, been very eventful. Earlier, the, the mayor mentioned to the, the 9/11 commemoration, and, you know, I think that, I, I hope that more of our residents in the future attend the 9/11 commemoration. You know, 23 years ago, that, that morning was, was horrific, and it's something that's indelibly engraved in my, in my mind. And, and following that terrible event, you know, every flag was flying on, on nearly every house. If you didn't have a flag, you couldn't get, couldn't get hold of one, they were, they were backordered. I mean, it was harder to get hold of a flag than what it was to get hold of TP at the beginning of the pandemic. But back then, I mean, it didn't matter whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, you're an American. And, and I think that it's, it's important that we remember that, that we do not forget it. And, and so I, I would encourage everyone to, to, to remember the, the, the people who, who died that day, what it means to all of us, to the, the firefighters and law enforcement personnel who, who sacrificed their lives in order to, to save others. It, it's so, so important to remember that, and it was an honor for me to be able to, to sing at the commemoration there, a true, true honor. So, that was last Wednesday. On Saturday, as, as, as the other Jack mentioned, stand-up did a great job at the, the Hailobos cleanup. I, I would have been there, except I was at Camp Kilworth with another volunteer project. There were 65 of us there, helping beautify and, and prepare Camp Kilworth for its, its future. You know, what was once a, a Boy Scout camp, now it's the YMCA that's doing, handling it and preparing it for the use by the community again. And another very worthwhile project, that, that there's so many, so many good people here in Federal Way that are helping the community, that are volunteering to make our community a better place, and I, I truly appreciate that. Also, I would like to, to, to just mention that, that another thing that is coming to, to Federal Way, in October of 2022, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints announced that there would be a, a temple built, a church temple built in the, in the Tacoma area, and it would be the sixth temple in, in the state of Washington. And yesterday, it was announced that that Tacoma area is Federal Way. And, so there will be a, a temple built, it'll be a beautiful building, it will be on beautiful grounds, 11 acres, 45,000 square foot structure. It will be south of Todd Beamer High School, just right out of, just outside the South Station Subarea Plan. So, just, just south of that. And, but it will be a, a, something that will be an asset to the community and help beautify the community, and, and help, you know, the, the purpose of the temple is to, to bring people closer to God. And, and anyway, I'm looking forward to, to that, and it's an honor to, to be able to have that here in the City of Federal Way. And with that, that is my report.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know Keith worked very hard putting that book together, so I was thinking about bringing that book on my vacation. But I know that it's not going to end well, because I want to come home in one piece, so, no, sorry, I, I can't take that. That's it, I don't have any report.
Very good, okay. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Honda?
Thank you. Saturday, at the South County, King County, Tua Library, there was an amazing event, it was a recycling event with shredding of paper going on. There were over 600 cars, between 600 and 700 cars there. We went just to, to see how it was going, and we're, we were stuck in traffic. I know they had, they called the police for help at one point, because Highway 99 was backed up through the light for a little bit, of people trying to get in there. Anyway, I want to thank Amanda and her team, and also the city team that was there. It was an amazing event. Obviously, in the future, we need a bigger place that you can get all those cars in and out. You know, we used to use WildWage for that, it was a much bigger event then, and now I know that we've moved to many, well, a few smaller events during the year to recycle like this. But after watching that on Saturday, maybe we need a larger space. But it was, it was amazing. As I, I promised Rose at the farmer's market I would talk about Taste of Federal Way, I know the mayor already has. Ooh, dear. This is a flyer, it's happening Saturday, September 28th. Hopefully, it'll be a nice sunny day, so we don't have rain again. 11:30 to 2:00 p.m., tickets are $25. 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as the mayor said, get there early, get in line early, the line does go, get pretty long. The Federal Way Historical Society is having their annual meeting September 21st, Saturday, at Camp Kilworth, from 2:00 to 4:00. And that's really exciting, if you've ever been to Camp Kilworth, it's one of my favorite places in Federal Way. And the fact that it's being restored and will, one day soon, very soon, be used for camping again, and for our youth to be able to go there and be in nature. You can be at, at Camp Kilworth and not even know that there's a road that goes, you know, goes by there. You don't hear it, it's just absolutely amazing and beautiful. So, if you want to see it, come to the Federal Way Historical Society Annual Meeting, and you'll be able to see what's going on at Camp Kilworth. And then you can become a member of the Historical Society and support the people that are saving our history. So, that's 2:00 to 4:00.
And what they?
Saturday. This Saturday, September 21st. I'm a member of the Federal Way Seruptemus Club, and we are holding any fundraiser on October 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00, called Blingo. It's bingo with a bling. It's our second annual event of holding that, this kind of a, an event. We support women and children in our community, and we, we, we give scholarships out to women. Last year, we were able to give two $1,500 scholarships out to women. They don't even have to use them for education, if they need them to buy a car for, to get their kids to childcare, so they can go to school. You know, we don't have really any strings on the scholarships, but if you'd like to support us, that would be awesome. Tickets are $60, and you can talk to me, and I can hook you up with a ticket. And this is Hispanic Heritage Month, which started, I think, a couple days ago. I'd also like to talk about the 911 memorial and event. I don't think I've ever missed an event that they've held, and my one wish, and I always, I always mention this to the firefighters, is that I wish more people would come. You know, it's held, in the beginning, it was held at, what, 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, it was really early, in those early years. And now it's at 1:00, which is, you know, after people have had their lunch break. Kids aren't there because they're in school, and I think we have a whole generation of kids growing up not knowing what happened that day, and what an awful day that was for our country. We have a school named after one of the heroes of that day, and I, I'm still not convinced that kids know what, what that day hap, what that day was. So, anyway, it'll happen again next year, and hopefully, more people will come, there are chairs, if they, if we, they needed to set up more chairs, they would set up more chairs. If it's rainy, it, you know, like the mayor said, I think this was the first time it went indoors, and that was because of the chance of rain. You know, it's, it's something that I wish we could get more people there, it should just be packed, there should be standing room only, and it shouldn't be the firefighters and police officers that are standing in the back. It should be everyone. You know, we have a veteran on our council, Paul McDaniel is a veteran, and he went to war after this, and we, we can never forget. So, I hope that we get more people there next year to remember. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDaniel?
Thank you. Kind of, do me off with that one, thanks.
Sorry.
It's all good. So, I'll tell you, 9/11 is different for me, it's my dad's birthday. So, every 9/11, I go ask my pops to celebrate the life that's still around. So, I remember 9/11 because I saw a plane crash into a building, and I was going to war. So, it's all good. On the other side, though, if you haven't seen my budget, I drill through it. Keith, your report's next. I will look through that thing, and I will come back with feedback for you on it, good, bad, and indifferent. The other thing is, is Saturday, I missed the cleanup, because I was doing some teaching at my school, but I came by afterwards and was able to walk through the cleanup, mind-blowing what that place looks like. I am looking forward to when we are able to complete more parks in that area, it is a beautiful gem that we have in this city. I'm just not sure how we're going to be able to preserve it the way it needs to be, but it is amazing to be able to walk for two to five minutes out into a woods, and almost all the cars go away. In that place where that guy built his camp, I can tell you, I know why he built it there. It is a pretty magical place in the middle of the forest, so I'm going to leave with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Safidasa?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be out of, actually, on vacation next week, so I'll be missing two of the budget meetings, but I'll be meeting with Brian next week, so I may end up taking this book with me. Not the 180-page book, but the budget, not the 800, but maybe we should start a book club. But, anyway, that'll be my report, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Could I make a quick comment to follow up on Councilmember Honda's?
Yeah.
On, on the Taste of Federal Way, I mean, I, just to promote people going there, I have no direct financial interest in this, but if anybody is disappointed because they haven't got their Sub-Zero fix lately, Sub-Zero is going to be at Taste of Federal Way, so you, so you can, so anyway, so more reasons to, to support the, support that with your $25 tickets.
Absolutely. Very good, thank you. Council President Kuchmore?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mine will be quick, because everybody's talked about everything already. Councilmember Honda and I will be going to chamber lunch tomorrow at Stabridge Suites, called Innovation, Economy, and Placemaking, so we'll report back what that's all about. All of you who have, you know, after 9/11, y'all put your flags up. Veterans Day is coming up, November the 11th, you know, think about keeping the flag up till then, but if you want to get rid of your flags, if it's old and tired, we do have a box in City Hall that will take your flags, and that, you can put them in there, and the Cub Scouts will come and make sure that they're disposed of properly. Mayor, I just want to remind you that stand-up was talking about the Day Center and the problems we're having. I'm not sure what we can do about that, but maybe you could have a discussion with management team?
We did, yes, we have.
Oh, you did, oh, you have, okay.
Yes, and we've reached out to them, we've, we sent people, we sent police, Public Works, code enforcement out there several times. I was there today and, and put eyes on it, and so we're, we're in constant communication with them.
All right, and just personally, I'm due to have a new member of my family any day now, a little baby. So, Friday's the last day possible, so I hope it's, hope we're all healthy and happy.
Here, here. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.